Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our City Council meeting this morning. It's good to see all of you here this morning. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Brand. Councilmember Brandau. Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Quintero. Councilmember Soria. Councilmember Capriolio.
Here, thank you very much. Next will be the invocation by our good friend Chief Pat Farmer. And would everyone please stand? And at the conclusion of our invocation, we will salute the flag. Thank you.
All right, good morning. I'd like to thank Councilmember Quintero for asking me to give today's invocation my second time, and it's always an honor. So I'd like to start off with a little bit of Psalm 103, which says, "Bless the Lord O my soul, and all that is within me bless his holy name. Bless the Lord O my soul, and all that is within me. Let us not forget all of his benefits, who heals all of our diseases and forgives us of all of our iniquities." Please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all of your blessings, and thank you for allowing us to wake up another day. And we ask you to please continue to govern and guide all of our city leaders. Please give us wisdom and help us make good decisions. We ask you to please bless every city employee and every citizen that lives in our community. We thank you for watching over protecting the two officers that were involved in the gun battle yesterday for protecting them and for allowing their guardian angels to be on the job and protecting them from any harm from the bullets that were fired at them. Father, we ask you to please continue to give this city favor and your blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Face the flag, please. Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you again. Chief Farmer, thanks again. Appreciate it. Okay, we are ready to approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have a couple of changes. The first change is item 3A, file number 16065, is being removed from the agenda by staff. And the 1015 item, I just need to announce that 1015, number 2, is introduction only, not introduction and adoption. Introduction only.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve this agenda? Motion by Member Brandau, second by Member Soria. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 7-0. Thank you. Are there any changes to the minutes of January 14th? Clerk, no? No changes? Very good. Is there a motion to approve the... Are there three sets or just January 14th? Just the 14th? Very good. Is there a motion to approve January 14th minutes? Thank you. Second? I'll second it. Motion by Member Brandau, second by President Capriolio. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 7-0. Okay, now, a good part of the morning. Council comments and reports. Councilmember Brandau.
Thank you, Council President. I actually have a couple. I want to start off by saying there was a report in the Fresno Bee this last week about morale on our police department. And it was very, you know, it's a very eye-opening report that we had to read about. However, I've had conversations with our police chief and also Jackie Parks, the head of the Fresno Police Officers Association, and it looks like there's already work being done behind the scenes to correct these problems and to deal and to bring solutions to the table. So I'm very appreciative. I just want to go on the record and say I support our chief of police. I really think he's doing a great job with limited resources, as is the whole department. So I would just like to comment on that. I'd also like to add that on this Saturday morning, myself and some Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts from District 2 are going to be working at the San Joaquin River Bottom to plant some indigenous plants. There's been an area of the river bottom that's been torn up for other activities for over a decade, and we're going to go back in and restore the river bottom with some indigenous plants that will just help for a long time to come. If you'd like to be a part of that, if somebody's watching on cable and they'd like to be a part of it by Saturday morning, they're more than welcome to contact my office. And you can reach my office at 559-621-7827, and we'll get you the information. We're going to be out working for about a half a day Saturday morning. We'd love to see some people come out and help us restore the river bottom. Finally, I was talking with a friend of mine, with PG&E, and she reminded me that those of us that do not have solar on our residential are paying for those that do have solar on their residential. And the folks that have solar on their residential are not paying connection fees, but the rest of us are paying for them. It's being heavily subsidized. I think it's important that rate payers know when they complain about their rates that they're paying for PG&E, that they are subsidizing this huge solar project. And those that are on solar and selling their solar back into the grid, not only do they not pay any connections for the grid like the rest of us do and repairs on the grid, but the market rate that they're getting is much higher than the price that... than the price per kilowatt hour for energy. So I just wanted to let everybody know that we're subsidizing solar in the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brandau. Member Soria?
Thank you, Council President. Just two quick comments. One, that the Capital Projects Oversight Board met earlier this week. We did have our attorney provide some training on the Brown Act and conflict of interest for all our board members. The city manager was also there and provided an overview of the projects that we will be reviewing over the next month. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, February 22nd at 5:00 PM. Obviously, those meetings are public, so I just wanted to make sure that folks in the community were aware. Oh, 5:30, sorry. And I also just wanted to report that I was in Sacramento last week. On Wednesday, I had the opportunity, was invited by our speaker-elect and a number of other folks to be on a water panel where we discuss water governance, drought, the supply, and affordability. And I was able to discuss on governors and governance and kind of local municipalities. So it was a really great panel and a great briefing. It was unprecedented because it actually brought municipalities throughout the state of California to be able to share our experience with our state electeds on these very important issues. Additionally, I'm very involved with the League of Cities. I was appointed to be on the, not only on the Public Safety Committee, Policy Committee, but also on the Transportation Communications and Public Works Committee. I'm proud to be there to represent the city of Fresno and the issues that impact us so that when policy recommendations are being made at the state level, when we're advocating for different issues, our voice is represented. And so that was also great to be there and be able to represent the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Screen is clear. I had a couple of things I wanted to discuss this morning. One was to thank Councilmember Baines and Councilmember Brandau as well for his organization and presentation of Dr. Martin Luther King Week. It's a wonderful celebration, and you do such a great job, you and the MLK Committee and the various sponsors. So, great job. Congratulations, and I look forward to it every year. So, well done. Meetings, as Council President, I don't realize how many meetings I have, but there's... the former president's laughing right now and chuckling, but anyway, it was a pleasure to attend the Fresno Association of Realtors Installation of Officers Dinner. Also, I met with the ASI students at Fresno State, and they're really working hard toward the community in general and specifically around Fresno State. So it's a great group of young leaders, and they're very diligent and hardworking, have some great ideas. Also attended the Crime Stoppers event with some of my colleagues, and we thank all of them for keeping Fresno safer. It's a wonderful event, and they really add a lot to the community and our crime-solving efforts. So it was a great event, and want to encourage them to keep going. Now, last Saturday, I attended my first Fresno State Rugby Men's Team Battle, and it was a real battle with Stanford. So last year, Stanford, the team was a little different composed, a few... a lot fewer players. Now we have over 50 players. And so Stanford beat us 80 to 5. This year, we tied at 24-24, and going into the last two minutes, we were ahead. They got lucky. Stanford gets lucky and got their last three points to tie us. But it was a very exciting game, and I'm learning it. I don't know all of the rules and regulations, but it's a dynamic, fun, active game, and no one got hurt. You think of rugby with no protection, you don't see anybody hurt like you do in a football game or whatever. So it's a... it was fun. I loved it. It was great. And congratulations to our rugby team. And then yesterday, I was up in Mel Peters, celebrating India's Republic Day. That's the equivalent of their Constitution Day. So in 1960, they were presented with a constitution that rules the largest democracy in the world, India, the largest democracy. And I had the pleasure of talking with the Consulate General on several things about Fresno, bringing more information and interest into Fresno from the community. And then last night, Terry's House, right over here, just around the corner from us, five years, they've been in existence five years, and they serviced over 3,900 families. Families that would normally not have a place to stay or go or seek comfort when their loved one is in the hospital. And they had some testimonials, one individual went through 20 surgeries, and Terry's House helped his family survive. And they donate that facility in time, I think they said, to 23 different countries, every state in the Union. Anybody that comes to Fresno with health issues, burn issues, otherwise, they're right there supporting them. And it was, it really was moving. And it's all by donations. All by donations. There's no grant money, no money. It's all people of Fresno that support this. So it was just really exciting. And last, again, I want to thank the chief and the police department. I was happy to hear that no one was hurt last night. It was, we had numerous gunshots, a battle in our community, and our police prevailed again due to their training and expertise. So I'm real happy that none of our officers were injured in that. So, Councilmember Baines.
Thanks, Council President. And I just wanted to add to your comment before last about Terry's House event. I stopped by there as well and wanted to make sure that we acknowledged that that was great. And Tom Richards, one of our local developers, is the inspiration behind that. Of course, his brother Terry, Terry Richards, who's his brother, the house is named after his brother. So it's a really, really neat thing. But I wanted to ask Council President if it's okay if we adjourn our meeting in the memory of Pauline Kimber today. She was the wife of former Councilmember Les Kimber, an amazing figure in our community, and we're sad and sorrowed about her passing.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, we are ready to proceed with the consent calendar. Would any Councilmember like to pull any item for discussion? If it is pulled, as per the new agenda, we will hear that contested consent matter at 1:30 this afternoon. So would any member like to pull any item on the consent calendar? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve this item? Thank you, Councilmember... Oh, excuse me. Thank you. It's very... I'm very fortunate to have the past president right next to me. And next to him is another president, so they're keeping me on my toes. Need to take this out to the public. Anyone in the public like to comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Now, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? And we had a motion by Councilmember... Sal, did you make... you motioned, you seconded? Okay. Motion by Member Quintero, second by Councilmember Brand. All those in favor? Say aye. Opposed? Passes 7-0. Going so fast, I can't keep up with myself. Okay, next item is a joint meeting of the successor agency, actions pertaining to statement of economic interest for designated positions. Is that the clerk's office or Marlene? Marlene, thank you. Good morning.
This is a routine item that directs the staff members affected by the need for Conflict of Interest Code to submit it. This is a routine item that clarifies the designated employees that submit Conflict of Interest forms.
Thank you for that concise presentation. We'll take this out to the community. Anyone in our community that's here this morning would like to comment on this item? Please come forward. Give us your name and address. Seeing none? Screen is clear. Do we have a motion to approve this item? Motion by Member Olivier, second by Soria. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 7-0. Next is another successor agency item, a resolution amending previously approved purchase and sale agreements. Ms. Murphy?
Thank you. The state has at long last approved our long-range property management plan, and they, the state, have asked us to... requested that we make a minor language change in previously approved purchase and sale agreements made by this board and council. There are seven such agreements that you previously approved. They're asking us to make one minor language change, described in your staff report, and that's the totality of this item. If you have questions, happy to answer.
Very good. Thank you. We'll take this out to the community. Anyone in the community like to come forward and make a comment or two on this item? Please come forward. Seeing none? Do I have a motion to approve this item? Motion by Member Quintero, second by successor agency chair Oliver Baines. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 7-0.
Thank you.
So I guess officially, we can adjourn that part of the meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, now, going to general administration. It's page 5 on my agenda. I hope it is, on everyone else's. On item 2A, it's the Retirement CAFRA Information Item. Since this is not an action item, there'll be no public comment on this. And staff presentation, Retirement Department? Good morning. Thanks for being here.
Good morning. Most of you think I retired.
We did.
I'm here for Stan McDivitt from the retirement office, here for a temporary assignment in the transition to our new retirement administrator. So I wanted to personally introduce you to our new retirement administrator, Rob Feller. Rob comes from the Ohio State Fire and Police System. Rob's... was a senior investment officer for private equities and public equities. He comes to us with a lot of degrees. He has a law degree, a very experienced individual, worked in the treasures office for the state of Ohio, chief investment officer in that role. So he comes with a lot of experience, and we look forward to Rob working with us. And I asked him if I could make one last appearance before the council and present the CAFRA to you, which I really enjoy doing. I know this is a very boring document. It's full of lots of information, but I like to communicate what's happened and where we're going with the system, and that's the message here. The information, as you know, is typical of every CAFRA you see, whether it's ours or the city's. Contains a lot of data, performance information. In the back, there's notes that have history information, probably 30 years of assumptions, investment returns. You've got employer rates, employee rates. You've got a whole lot of data that's built into this document. But I think the important part behind it is to kind of walk you through what's gone on in the last year and where we see it going forward. If you look at the systems in total, there's $2.5 billion between the two retirement systems and assets. We pay out $102 million last year in benefits to our retirees. We have approximately 6,000 members between the two systems, so that's active members and retirees and deferred vested. So it's split about 4,000, round number, about 4,000 in the employee system and about 2,000 in the fire and police system. Member contributions last year, the members, the employees paid in $16.1 million into the system. The city paid in $31.3 million into the system. Investment returns, important thing that we always like to look at and talk about. Our returns were down last year, 3.3 percent. But remember, that's a five-year average of 11 percent. So it's, you know, reversion to the mean in the investment markets, and this goes on. The 10-year number is 6.9, 20-years, 8.4, and 30-year numbers have averaged for the last 30 years, 9.5 percent. So we've exceeded our assumed rate by a considerable amount over that period of time, and the good news is you are still fully funded in both systems. And we have numbers that we can share with you on that. The fire and police system is the highest-funded system. It's 119 percent on an actuarial basis. That means we smooth gains and losses on a five-year basis in those numbers. The true test is market value. That's where we take the actual market value as of June 30th, 2015. The market value is 122.8 percent, by far the highest-funded system in the state of public fund in the state of California. The employee system's a little less funded. It's 109.2 actuarial basis, 112.2 on a market value basis. Both extremely well-funded and solid. The message I think I wanted to deliver to you today is the actuarial return data as of June 30th, 2015. And there's a message that's kind of built into these numbers. The thing you have to remember is you're still getting surplus credits from the system. From 2016, the year we're finishing, to next year, you're going to get another $1.1 million in additional surplus credits. So that's combined total of $4 million you're getting in reduced contribution requirements. The message, of course, is we all know what's happening in the investment markets. Our returns are negative currently for the fiscal year, and I caution you to be careful about the $4 million. It's going to come back and be a requirement that you will have to pay two or three years out from now. So be careful in managing the city budgets and how you expend this money. So your blended rate on the fire and police is actually 23.04 percent. Net of credits, it's 19.02. So the message here is be careful in your budgeting. You're still going to get credits this coming year and the year after, but if the markets are rough, and they feel like they'll be rough for a few years, there's always a reversion to the mean. When you've got 11-year, 11 percent return over the last five, you're going to see some corrections. So anticipate that and be careful on how you manage it going forward. You will end up paying that $4 million back to the system down the road a little ways. So that's... the message is short and clear, and I can answer any questions you'd like.
Wow. Well, that was an excellent presentation, and appreciate your cautionary words on being cautious in our future for a few years and keep those numbers going in a positive way. So for what you saw there, Mr. Feller, it's a tough act to follow, but we want to welcome you to Fresno and to our city and look forward to working with you. And I think you'd make a great partnership in CPA firm or something. I don't know. It'd be really productive.
I was jokingly, you know, it took a big man to replace me.
Literally, literally. I was going to ask him how he feels about Michigan State or Michigan, but I won't do that. Being an Ohio State fan, I'm sure...
We've been talking about Ohio State a little bit.
Thank you very much. We have some items on the screen. Let's go to Ms. Smith.
Good morning. I'm actually a member of the retirement board, and I just wanted to welcome Mr. Feller and to let the council know that his expertise that he brings to our retirement system is astounding. The board did a national search. It went on for months and months and months and months, and absolutely the best candidate. So I think that we are in very good hands. I would also like to once again congratulate Mr. McDivitt on his retirement and wish him all the best. So, thank you.
Definitely going to miss you. Councilmember Brand. Is this an action item, city attorney?
No, it's not. It's for informational purposes.
Okay, I also wanted to, again, thank Stan for all the work done over the years and welcome our new retirement. You've got... you do have big shoes to fill, but I think Fresno's probably one of the best-funded pension systems in the country. Would that be a fair statement?
There's probably seven systems that are fully funded in the United States. And we have two of them.
One final question. Can I invest my 401K in your pension fund? Because my return has not been that good. I'll second that motion. Okay, thank you. Both you guys, welcome Fresno. Thank you very much. Enjoy your retirement. A big man to take his shoes, there's a button there that will raise that podium up too, big man status.
I told him about that, actually.
Very good, very good. Look forward to working with you, sir. Welcome to Fresno.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is a general administration item 2B, as in boy, BRT item. Staff, are you prepared to make your presentation?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
If we may, there are two items before you, and they're so connected, so there's only one presentation, and we realize there's a need for two votes. But if it's okay with you, that we would prefer to do this, just this one presentation versus doing it again for the other item, hopefully that's okay with you.
I think it is. Looking at my colleagues, no one seems to object to that. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, essentially, the BRT project was 32-point... a $38.2 million project, where 10 million were for buses and 28.2 for construction. The $28.2 million construction for BRT included the stations and the livability project, the bridge, the walkway, and the underpass at Venice. Essentially, it was funded... those two projects are funded by FTA Small Starts Grant money, Prop 1B, and livability grants. Essentially, in order to also operate BRT, there was a need for us to have some operating funds, of which we've already secured $3.5 million for CMAC, congestion mitigation air quality funding. So in about, I believe it's June or July, we went out to bid for BRT, and the expectation was $28.2 million for the construction portion. In about October or so, we received two bids. One bid, $32.6, the other, $38.3 million. The lowest bidder was Taker. At that point, that wasn't acceptable to me, that number that came in. So we asked our project management consulting firm to tell us why, give us an explanation what happened. We asked the engineering firm the same thing. Tell us what happened. We went a step further, and we went with an independent estimate, an independent cost estimate. The independent cost estimate came up about a couple hundred thousand dollars different than the low bid amount. At that point, we realized that was a pretty firm number, and the bidder had a fair number. The difference, though, is it was $4.4 million higher than the engineering estimate. So the question was, what could we do? We took the time to really examine it, to try to understand. We go back out to bid, we looked at the cost of going back out to bid, as well as the delay. One of the things that happened as we were trying to figure this out was our bid period expired, and in that time, one of the bidders, the firm with the $38.3, dropped out. So that left us with one bidder, which happened to be the lowest bidder. So we looked at each element, looked at the cost estimate, and then began to try to understand where there was some disconnect and where we could make improvements. Essentially, what we came up with was if we were to look at shelters, not the engineered shelters, but some essentially prefabricated shelters, that would save us $1.2 million. We looked at communication equipment, and at some point, our thinking was somewhere there was a disconnect between the types of shelter, of communication equipment. We're talking about the cabinets at the street level for the traffic signals. The type that we need actually would be $1.9 million less than what was actually in the bid. was actually in the bid. And then we looked at the, at the bidder's amount for the shelters. The low bid had one point one million dollars for shelters. Kind of bleeds me now over to the second piece. The second piece was, as we were considering this bid and how to make it work, the project and how to make it work, the New Starts Grant, the Measure C, New Tech Grant, came up. The New Tech Grant, as we read it, happened to have a number of the items that actually fit for BRT. And the idea is how do you move a system, what kind of new technology innovations will help you improve your system? So we looked at that, and we said, okay. One of the items they even say clearly is off-board fare collection. So what we realized was if we were to pair the reductions and some of the items that could be purchased out of New Starts Grant, that would then give us the opportunity to come within the thirty-two point six million dollar range. Again, kind of looking at some reductions and then those other projects that we would bring forward from the New Tech money. So essentially, that's our ask here. So let's say if Measure C, for whatever reason, fails us. The Measure C grant is a ten million dollar grant in which we have an exceptionally viable project. Our ask is five million dollars in that. Four point four for BRT, so the question, it's almost five million. The question is, what about the other money? There are two other pieces in here, and the two other pieces, the key valet, and a key valet is the way our system is operating right now, we've got supervisors who are doing functions that could be done another way. And one of those functions that supervisors do is they hand out keys to drivers as they come in, so they can take the relief vehicles and actually start their day of work. They also check in that driver as that driver comes to work. We feel that significantly, it will replace a body and give us an opportunity to deploy those supervisors out to the field and not do so much of that kind of clerical work. So this key valet is a forty thousand dollar ask. The other ask, that's a non-BRT ask, is GPS on our relief vehicles and on our supervisor vehicles. As it stands now, we don't know where those vehicles are exactly, and we want the opportunity in the event of an emergency, as well as for the sake of better managing, to know exactly where those vehicles are at all time. So what we're asking for is the permission to be able to award the contract to Tykert for the thirty-two point six million dollars, allow us to then negotiate with Tykert to make some of those reductions that we just mentioned. And the second ask is to be able to apply for Measure C new technology funding, which would allow us to bring in some of those components that we kind of begin to take out from the Measure C application. One of the pieces that I did not mention is in the event we were not successful with Measure C. We identified eighty ticket vending machines, and those ticket vending machines are pre-owned. We need fifty-four. Of those fifty-four ticket vending machines, we would cannibalize the other twenty-six, which would allow us to continue forward with off-board fare collection. That's our ask.
So Council President, if I could, because that was a lot of information, but given the desire to try to get these things knocked out in ten minutes and no more than three or four slides per PowerPoint, let me try to summarize. First of all, this is identical to what we just went through with the Fulton Mall, that we have identified the ability to reduce the scope in order to align the project budget with the amount of appropriations available. We would do the same thing we did before. We would sit down and meet with the vendor. We would negotiate revised scope. We would come back to council and present those findings to the council. And those who proceed would not be issued to the contractor to move forward, so we'd have the same language that we had with the Fulton project with American. Those who proceed would not be issued until the city attorney was able or comfortable in signing off appropriations was available. As Mr. Marshall pointed out, one of the things, for example, with the ticket vending machines, even if they don't get the Measure C grant, Mr. Marshall has already made arrangements with Las Vegas Transit to get free TVMs or ticket vending machines. They are out buying state-of-the-art, brand-new units, and from a technology standpoint, these are like eight years old, but they're old technology. It's kind of like a flip phone today compared to a, no comment about the flip phone. But anyway, Las Vegas has said, you want them, you can have them, we'll give you even the inventory that we have that needed to support these older pieces of, older TVMs, and we will provide staff to train your staff on how to maintain them. Same thing with some of the other things, the shelters, they are like out of a catalog. You can go out and just order them right now. We believe that will carve another one point two million. Now, if we are successful with the Measure C, then we have enough time in the schedule right now to go ahead and order the state-of-the-art TVMs. But if not, the fallback is we'll just install the ones from Las Vegas. So we believe that we have identified, want a way to get the project within budget. We have contingencies in the event that we don't get Measure C funds that would still allow us to move forward and provide, at the end of the day, the core BRT services that we've always talked about and we have talked about. And I want to bring, highlight the fact that ever since council said yes to this project, and a lot of you are aware of that. In fact, we just had a project this week approved by the Planning Commission. There is a lot of interest and a lot of activity occurring right now along the Blackstone Corridor as a result of this council's decision to move forward with the investment in BRT. So thank you, council.
Thank you. Member Quintero, you're first up.
Brian, I want to thank you for meeting with me earlier in the week and going over the agenda items. Really appreciate the due diligence that you folks put into it as far as, you know, really trying to save as much money as possible, and then you, you know, what you did with the ticket vending machines, I think was really good job in, you know, cannibalizing some of the machines and putting complete ones together. It's just really a good job, and I know that we're looking forward to, you know, seeing the changes on the Kings Canyon and Ventura corridor. It's really important for the ridership that we have there. So just really appreciate all the hard work. I've got one real, just quick question, is, that really isn't related to this, but as we move forward on the project, are you going to have maybe some folks available or a company available that would be meeting with business owners or neighborhood folks that need clarification as a project goes along, that will be able to say, okay, yeah, call this number?
Yeah. You know, definitely. There's a, we recognize that BRT will be different, and there's a need to meet with stakeholders at all levels. We've made some of those provisions, and that plan is still being formulated. So we recognize that, and we do want to meet with stakeholders at all levels. Business, the riders, it's a comprehensive communications plan that's needed.
Okay, because I know, especially for us in District Five, with the ridership levels that we have, I know we're going to be getting some calls, so that's going to be important to keep folks updated on what's going on. So thank you, City Manager. Thank you. Really appreciate it, Brian. And Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Okay, we have motion by Member Quintero, seconded by Member Baines. Before we go to the next comments by Councilmember Brand, we need to take this out to the public for any comment. Is anyone in from the community that's here this morning who would like to comment on this Item A or B, B or C, excuse me? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. Next is Councilmember Brand.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mr. Marshall, for the phone call and the information. We had two bids, one at roughly thirty-two million dollars based on your presentation from Tykert and Sons, and one for thirty-eight point four million dollars from Granite Construction. Can you explain the roughly six million dollar disparity between those two bids?
Yeah, and I'll ask Stephen to help me. One of the proposers, God, his shelter amount was a very nice house at every shelter, at every station. The, his costs were very high. If I recall, he was about two million dollars additional in shelters. His mobilization, their mobilization was about a million dollars more just in mobilization. Their, their ticket vending machines were about three million dollars more, so.
Do you have flop shoes with him, or?
I'm sorry. Yeah, so he had a number of items that were significant.
In the design specifications, it should have gave a clear direction on what, you know, in other words, we want the Cadillac version, we want the Volkswagen version, no deference to Volkswagen, but, I mean, I'm in the business and I, you know, and it's a pretty big disparity on something that was relatively simple. This wasn't a complex project to put together. Then any explanation why you only had two vendors that bid on it, not more?
Yeah, what we got back from the, from our project management consultant was the climate was, there was a lot of activity at the time. There was the Fulton Mall project, there was the, I think there was a water project going, and there was a lot of private investment going on, and that was the reason why we, based on the project management consultant, why we only got two bidders. The other issue in terms of price disparity, that's also what they said in terms of the differences in price, was that they said, based on the climate, one proposer felt that if they could get it, why not?
And both companies have an excellent reputation, you know, in their business. But even taking the low bid, Tykert, was four point four million dollars off. I mean, that's sixteen percent. That's a major disparity. And again, I questioned, you know, how the original engineer estimate could have been so far off. Can you explain that?
Well, again, we asked three different sources and came back with the same information from three, from all three. Essentially, they said the climate was just such where, and again, that was one of the areas, though I wasn't here, I knew the importance to the council in terms of staying within budget. I knew that was greatly important. But, and even a few days, not long before the, we went out to bid, we asked the question again, are the numbers really firm? What we got back from our project management consultant was yes.
The consultant, who is the consultant?
Parsons Brikhoff. When we went to the independent cost estimate, again, that's kind of what was inferred in the independent cost estimate, was that the climate changed, and there were a number of projects that were actually being executed or about to be executed, and the climate just quickly changed on the, on price.
Yeah, you know, but there's a big difference between getting a project consultant who typically is there to affirm what you're trying to get. It's not, you know, and there's a big difference between being paid to give an opinion versus putting a bid out and putting your business on the line, because you're going to have to live by that, those figures. And in cases of construction companies, quite often in a project this size, it could mean bankruptcy. So I, you know, I could see, I would weigh a lot more on the actual bids versus a consultant. And we had a project, we've had several projects here, but one that comes to mind was that last year, we had a project on solar panels out there at the solar treatment plant, that in my opinion was grossly misdone. Other, my councilmembers, Baines and Brandell, agreed with me. And so there's a trust factor sometimes that we just take it at face value, and it's not a personal deal, it's, we're entrusted with the public benefit to watch over these dollars. And actually, a project this size, thirty-two million dollars, does this fall under the oversight board?
It will.
Okay.
And let me add to that. So the solar project, and this is an apples to orange, I think, with all due respect, Councilmember, comparison, the solar project was out to bid. It was a very quick turn. It was a very strict and limited scope. There are a number of issues with this. As Mr. Marshall pointed out, not only did we get an engineer's estimate from PB, we requested that they do a peer review and get a second opinion on the engineer's estimate, which was also confirmed. And then we've done a subsequent review of the specs to see whether or not, why the engineer's estimate was so far off. And that analysis has come back and confirmed that the numbers that we're seeing today are indicative of the climate, because we also have high-speed rail going on in this area, and has also confirmed that if we go back out to bid, the only thing that's probably going to happen is that the numbers are going to go up. Both Granite and Tykert are well-known, very large, reputable firms, and the reality is, is that the numbers are what they are. Not to say that Mr. Marshall and I have, have, are expressed some real concerns with the outcome of the bid in the engineer's estimate, but I can, and we are looking at and are having conversations with PB as to their viability moving forward, and how are they going to help mitigate this, this gap that's been created by the engineer's estimate and the fact that we've gone out, and if we go back out, it's going to cost us more. But that is something, it's a legal issue that we are dealing with the attorney's office, and I don't want to expand much farther than. We are having some very significant conversations with the project manager.
Okay.
PB.
Thank you, City Manager. You know, going out to bid also, if you get more people bidding, can also conversely make it more competitive, and we may actually come back with something a little bit better. So I don't necessarily buy that bringing, coming back again is going to raise the cost, could actually lower the cost. But basically, what we're doing is you're gutting the program. You're just going through, putting in prefabricated shelters, you're taking away all the glitz, and you're putting, you know, in cheaper models, you know? And to me, that's, you know, taking away what we're supposed to be doing here. And I know, I'll continue on in my presentation. And, you know, you're trying to align the cost in, you know, and it says in the report that by applying for Measure C for the three point five million dollar technology grant, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So getting into that, it says in this report, it says it's three point five million dollars, and you identify what you're going to do. But in the next item we're going to vote on, which is the actual application grant, it's four point six million dollars. So is it three point five or is it four point six?
Okay. The difference are the items that are related to BRT versus the overall items for Measure C. So the items that were related to BRT are the three point three for the off-board fare collection and those four items that you see below it in the staff report.
But what you're basically doing, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to cut all these things out, but we're going to take a grant and try to restore all these things. Is that correct? In so many words? Well, that's the way I read it. You're taking all these things out, but you're applying for a grant to basically restore them.
Okay, so let me give you an example, then. First of all, the underlying core service improvement of buses running every ten minutes and running fewer stops and reducing the travel time from downtown to the north end or from the north end to downtown is still there. The TVMs that we just talked about, which is a key element of this, we've already said, if we do not get the Measure C, we already have an arrangement with Las Vegas to get new ones installed, so that when the service is put into place, we will have the ticket vending machines. We're not gutting that out. We're not gutting that out, we have already...
But the ones in Las Vegas aren't at the same level as the other one?
Well, they're eight-year-old, so...
Well, we're getting the handydans.
Can I make a call on a flip phone? Yeah.
Okay, so there's a difference. Where this value engineering can go, can go in positive directions, it can go in negative directions. I see this as a convoluted odd logic, that's how I look at this. It's like, I wanna build your house, it's gonna be $400,000, oh my God, it came out to $500,000. Let's take out a couple of the sinks in the bathroom, let's take out some of the light fixtures, oh, let's not do the pool. That's not a way I would do business. I think it's borders-on being financially irresponsible and reckless to the city to come in, and if the figures we're dealing with, they're talking about $32 million, not $3 million, not $300,000. And we're making a series of assumptions, several assumptions on this deal, that, what if they don't come through? What if we don't get the grant? And everybody has an explanation. I just think it's a poor way, a reckless way to proceed as a city, as the stewards for the taxpayers on this project. I'm all for applying for the TLD grant, and we talked about that, I think that's a great idea. My suggestion is, we should apply for the grant, my recommendation is, we should go out and rebid it under new design specifications and do it properly. Now, maybe it delays it six months, okay? But in the end, there's a transparent process, there's a more logical, business-like way that does not provide the risk that this provides. And you can, we can all debate the nuances of, well, it's not really a risk, but in the essence, we're just, we're shuffling things around and we're just trying to, I would rather have a final product that has all the stuff we really want in it, the stuff that's gonna make this work. Because to make this work, the technology, the way the buses operate, the more we start ratcheting down, the less likely we're gonna be successful. If we're gonna do it, in other words, let's do it right. So, I would recommend that we, again, the next item will come up, I'm in favor of the grant, and I wanna see a top-notch project, not one that's value-engineered and doesn't meet its goals and makes unnecessary financial risks. So, I can't support what we're doing today, but I'm okay, I voted for this concept to begin with, I'm okay with it, but I want it done right. Thank you.
City Manager, did you, or thank you. City Attorney, did you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify the condition of approval. I understand that if council approves the contract, it would be subject to a condition that the city attorney's office will not sign off on the contract documents unless we are provided documents showing current appropriations to cover the cost of the contract as amended with a 5% contingency, if that's correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Brand.
Yes, I understand, but going forward when you're $4 million off, and there's a remedy, there's a remedy in this grant, just do the timing right, just do the project right. Why take unnecessary risk? And again, I could go back over 10 or 20 years and say, well, this was presented as, like the Met Museum, I could read the staff report, there's absolutely no risk to the city general fund. I could read the same words on Granite Park, and guess what? We're about $25 million less because we did it. So, this could potentially impact the general fund. Now, is it likely? No. But why take the risk? Let's do the project right. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager.
I'm sorry. One, again, let me re, this is the same process we went through with the Fulton Mall. Same, we're gonna go at it the same way, and that was successful. As far as the general fund, I've been in this organization for almost 40 years, I only remember one time, for one year, where the general fund, and it wasn't even the general fund, it was actually Measure C dollars, the general fund has never been used to support or subsidize public transit, Fresno Air Express, in the 40 years that I've been here. Two, pursuant to the Reserve Act, that I helped league, councilmember Brand amend, every one of the enterprise departments, by even my, by my direction before I got into the act, was to establish a 25% operating reserve. Every one of them does. In the case of FACS, they've got a $10 million operating reserve right now, not even counting the capital reserve, they've got a capital reserve as well. In fact, their operating reserve is just a little bit shy from what the general fund has. My point is that the chances and the likelihood of the general fund ever having to write a check to help subsidize this project or FACS is, while it may, could, in 40 years that I've been here, it's never happened. So, I doubt that will ever, ever happen. But again, council, this is no different than what we did with the Fulton Mall. In fact, we've got an arrangement to get TVMs from another transit agency, it's no different than us going from this particular type of streetlight down to this particular type of streetlight. Only difference is, is that they actually have streetlights that they're gonna get from another city that might work this as well.
One last comment, Member Brand.
Sorry, this will be the last one. And I appreciate what City Manager's saying, but there is a difference between this and the Fulton Mall. Fulton Mall is $2 million, this is $4 million. It's a little bit bigger, but it's, the disparity is twice as much. And this has a remedy, and the remedy is available, just do the timing right. I don't, I saw in the Fulton Mall more of a compelling timeline, I don't see that compelling timeline here. If it sets it back, I understand it will, I don't necessarily believe it'll escalate the cost, I believe it can come out right, and we can argue all day long whether it will or not. I just think the prudent fiscal way to do this is to redo it, apply for the grant, and why even take a risk? Whether the risk is 100 to 1 or 10 to 1, why take the risk? That would be my final word. Thank you.
I know it's your final word. Thank you. You know what, I really appreciate and encourage this type of lively, but respectful debate on this issue, and it really vets this whole process, and I hope the public and our colleagues that work here in the city building with us appreciate it, but, so, that was good. Thank you. Now, we must move on. Councilmember Brandell.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Brian, thank you for meeting with me yesterday, and Stephen and Ara as well, that came in and took the time to meet with me. I've got my notes in front of me. I think you're very clear, I think I have an understanding of what you spoke with me about. I definitely, definitely believe that we need to invest in our bus system. I'm not 100%, as you know, I voted against Bus Rapid Transit the first time around, I believe that was before you were the head of that department, so, the head of transportation. So, I voted against it the first time around for a couple of different reasons. Those reasons, to me, are highlighted in this conversation. I woke up this morning and, to get ready for council meeting today, and a friend had forwarded me an article that's in Today's Investor Business Daily, it's in Today's paper. "Los Angeles' Mass Transit Fiasco Shows the Limits of Government Investments." And it seems that Los Angeles put $9 billion over the last three decades into subway lines that nobody's riding. 80 stations, 90 miles a track. Oddly enough, in Los Angeles, people prefer buses over that track that they spent, that they laid. But the bigger problem is, is trying to figure out where transit riders are at. This article says that ridership is down 10% over the last decade, and the decline appears to be accelerating. Another quote is, "Transit agencies are still trying to figure out where the riders have gone and what can be done to bring them back." The Times noted, Los Angeles Times. The problem here, here's another quote that I think's very valuable and kind of captivates my view on these similar related projects. "The problem here isn't that transit has been unfunded, the city's ongoing public transit disaster points to bigger problems of having the government, that city, state, and federal, make investments like this in the first place, investments that are driven more by log-rolling politicians and fanciful visions of changing behavior more than actual consumer demand." It's the same argument that I made two years ago, and I believe that there's a great opportunity for Fresno to make that same type of a blunder. Here's what I will say about our bus system, and I rode our bus system two days ago from North Fresno down to the Shields Station. In North Fresno, when I got on the bus at Fruit and Herndon, there were two riders, myself and one other person. As the bus headed south, we definitely picked up more riders. At the peak, we had 13 riders on the bus, about half of them got on and got off at Fresno City College. So, there is a need for, there is a need for bus ridership, but it's 13 people on that bus. And then I got off at the transfer station and got picked up by my chief of staff and taken back to my car. And I'm gonna spend a little bit more time riding that bus personally to understand how it works in the city of Fresno. And Brian, you and I, I brought up some specifics about that bus line, that was bus line number 45, and you had some great answers for me. And the truth is, and I like to just share it now, we've been, Bruce, I've been demanding for a year now that we have the survey that was done on our transportation system, we paid consultants to do it, they came back and made a preliminary presentation, but we've never come up with solutions to follow up what our consultant said for a long time. One of the things that you suggested in my, in our, in our meeting yesterday was that we need to spend time on our bus system creating a better grid. Right now, we have a hub and spoke system out of Manchester, actually, we have a dual hub and spoke system out of Manchester and downtown Fresno. And you prefer creating a grid to where if I was at Fruit and Herndon and I wanted to get to the Manchester Center, I wouldn't have to take a very long, roundabout way to get there. And that makes sense to me in the use of transportation dollars. I prefer to see transportation dollars spent on updating our grid rather than a fanciful, government-prescribed solution that I don't think there's any proof that there's interested or ridership in. So, I'm gonna be voting no on this project today. I would support going out to make, for Measure C funds for that second vote, for sure, and have an opportunity to look at that. I do like your idea of getting those additional key valet, and some of these other ideas are very well done, and I think you're doing a great job and, with our bus system. So, I do support busing in the city of Fresno, but I think we have to look at it properly. I'd rather build a better grid rather than focus on two streets. Thank you very much.
If I may?
Of course.
The, the great thing about BRT is, in every transit system, you've got a kind of a strong center point, kind of a core, and the great part about BRT for this city, especially the way it is structured, BRT is, the, those two lines will kind of shore up a core for that gridding out, for those future plans. Again, the large thing about the hubs, you've gotta decentralize it. So, you need something that's really your staple, you need that, that strong thing, and BRT is second base, it's not first base to gridding out, it's like second base. So, to your point, we're moving in that direction, and to the LA article, the, LA has a new leader there, and a large part of that new leader, them selecting that new leader, was, his take on transit was greatly different than the previous leader. Here's a guy, I think, guy's from Chicago also. And, and again, his approach to transit is, is, is a healthy one. He recognized those things and, and was a part of releasing kind of what happened in the past, he embraces those things, and now they move forward. And I promise you, the next articles you see will be his vision on, on how those missteps happened and his corrections. But that article was helpful for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. I just had a couple of remarks about this project. I think that, I think my spiritual home on this issue is with Councilmember Brand and Councilmember Brandell. I have some grave concerns about the system that we operate, FACS, I have some grave concerns about politicians in places like Sacramento and Washington DC who think that people need to leave the Lexus at home and hop on a bus. I agree with you, Councilmember Brandell, I don't, I don't think that that's happening here in California, I don't think it's, it's happening anywhere. I think that, I think that the state being $77 billion behind in roads maintenance, I think that would be, and no offense to our department director, or even the city manager who's been in transport mostly his entire career, but I just don't think that it works. But in this case, with Bus Rapid Transit, we have a, I believe that Bus Rapid Transit was coming to us here in the city of Fresno, whether we like it or not. This project, as it comes before us today, is already much watered down, has been watered down from the project that was first brought to us. If you remember, the city was, at one point, bidding out artwork to be done, great pieces of public art to be done on the side of, of great concrete stations. This is when I took a trip to Stockton years ago, and I rode their Bus Rapid Transit system, and it's a much different Bus Rapid Transit system than what was proposed here. And I made a series of recommendations, and I worked with Mayor Swearengen, I worked with city manager, and basically created the system that's being proposed to us today. I think that, I think that the administration wanted to have a more grandiose-looking system with different kinds of stations and different, a different system than what's coming forward now. And I mean, that, that is the case, because they had to engineer it, they had to scale it back, they had to engineer it back. Remember, Councilmember Brandell, when it was gonna be the 102-foot articulated, double-articulated buses, the magic buses, remember? And remember when it was gonna be the great, big, huge stations that required so much construction to be done? This is the system that this council wanted. I know you've never voted for it, and that's okay, but maybe Councilmember Brand, you're my audience on this, but this is the system that this, that this body wanted, was with the prefab stations, where if the, if the BRT thing doesn't work, or we find a different area where it should go, we can just unbolt those stations and move them someplace else. I think that, I think we're looking at a lighter, more mobile, more practical system than, than we were looking at when this came forward years and years ago. And so, the other thing I wanted to bring up is that this administration is paying attention to Blackstone Avenue, and to me, that's a very, very big deal. They're putting their, their money where their mouths are in terms of providing law enforcement in a number of locations, they're putting their money where their mouths are in terms of more FACS officers, and they are talking about changing the face of Blackstone. That's what a lot of the, the code update was about. I don't think that if I voted with you today, that we could stop BRT. I don't think that there's enough support on this body, among members of this body, to stop the coming of BRT. I think folks are gonna vote for it, I think we're gonna see it passed today, but I've, I've studied it too, and Councilmember Brand, I really appreciate the work that you've done on this. I'm with you 99 times out of 100, but unfortunately, I won't be with you today, because I, I think that, I do agree with the administration that when Fulton Mall came, came in over, they scaled it back, and then we all voted for it. And so, this, this is not as glamorous or pretty, there aren't gonna be hipsters drinking craft beers on the FACS BRT, but it's, it's still something that shows this organization's commitment to the people who live along Blackstone and live near Blackstone Avenue. I think that it, I like the used, older machines, I think it works for us. I mean, let's try it and, and see how it goes. So, I, I'm gonna have to break with the, my caucus today, but I encourage councilmembers to cast a yes vote for, for this watered-down version and lighter and more practical version of BRT. But that doesn't mean I disagree with your sentiment. Thank you.
Is that it? Councilmember Olivier, thank you. Councilmember Baines.
Thank you, Council President. And I was encouraged to be Mike Tyson with my comments here, but I respect my president's desire to keep things short, so I won't go as Mike Tyson-ist. But I do wanna bring a slightly different perspective than, than a little of what's been, been heard here, and I was slightly disappointed with some of the characterizations early on about this project being gutted, as it were. project being gutted, as it were, building a house and taking out bathrooms and restrooms. I think that is, to put it mildly, a slight over-exaggeration of what we're doing here. And, you know, not too far in the distant past, this council had to make a very similar decision with the opening of Fulton Street, with this word that we're beginning to enjoy, value engineering. Except, I actually think that in this case, we are slightly better positioned than we were with the Fulton Street opening, meaning that the contingencies you all have already identified. I certainly have seen nothing to support the idea that we are watering down this project to something that's unrecognizable or taking rooms out of a house. Now, would this be more like choosing tile instead of wood? Maybe, right? Do you want backsplash or no? Maybe. I could see that. There's some of that that's occurring here. But I don't even think that is final. I think that you have an opportunity to make sure that we do have the backsplash and the wood. So, I believe this item is going to pass today because I think that we probably have enough support, so I won't belabor the issue. But I just want to make sure that, I just want to make sure that there's another point of view. You know, a colleague of mine so artfully read an article from the LA, from the LA area. I don't know if it was the LA Times or not.
Investors.
Oh, Investors. Well, he was talking about LA and what have you from the Investors Business Weekly. And a couple of things I wanted to say about that is, you know, first, we've got to be careful with comparing buses to subway systems. I'm not exactly sure that that comparison always is the appropriate one to line up to. So, while I can appreciate that the article was about a subway system, we're talking about a bus system. And people in Fresno actually do ride buses. And I don't see this as being a wild, reckless investment at all, not anything close to what they did there. We are using no general fund dollars to do this project. As a matter of fact, we're using all state, federal, and some Measure C dollars, which is a huge advantage to our citizenry because we are recouping what otherwise would be tax dollars that go someplace else that we pay for. So, I think that that characterization is really off the mark. And I would also say that we should be careful about using LA as a city we want to compare ourselves to because we can cherry pick articles, but we certainly are not LA. We are, city of Fresno, and we're very proud of that. I'm sure we're not going to, there are some things that LA is doing that I like, that I know for sure some of us would not like. And if we wanted to begin to compare ourselves to LA week after week or other cities, I think we would be in dangerous ground. So, I think that that was a real, very far-off mischaracterization, again, of what we're trying to attempt to do here today, as was the fact that we have gutted this project or watered it down to an unrecognizable version. Again, really, really far off the mark. So, I'm supportive of the project, as you know. My colleagues, in my opinion, have to be very careful about how we talk about our financial stewardship here. I think you guys are doing a fine job. I'm glad that you brought us contingencies, and I will wholeheartedly support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for those concise comments. Councilmember Soria.
Thank you, Council President. I also just want to thank Brian for making the time and coming to meet with me and explain to me the project and what you guys are doing in terms of the funds. I do want to say that, as was mentioned before, in terms of the similarity to what we did in the Fulton, with the Fulton Mall, I actually didn't get to vote on either of these projects. They came before my time. And there, and I do recognize the similarity that exists. I agree with actually my council colleague, Baines, in that I think we're in a better place with this project because we have found an alternative that even enhances and adds some other amenities that we were not even considering prior to looking at this grant. So, I really appreciate the creativity and really looking at the resources, the other additional resources that may be available to us to really enhance our public transit system. I am a strong supporter of enhancing our transit system. I recognize the benefits. While I didn't have a chance to vote on the original project, I do understand the benefits that come with investing in our public transit system. And just to be clear, we are not utilizing any general fund money. And so, when we're saying about taking unnecessary financial risk, I'd like to really, you know, just challenge that notion because we're not. We are using the existing funds that have been committed, and we're looking creatively at other potential funds that our city is entitled to if we are able to compete to get them. And so, while I appreciate some of the other comments, I do believe that this project continues to be a good project and that the staff has done all they can to look at alternative sources. My, you know, I really support this because of the number of benefits that we know investing in public transit has, enhancing personal opportunities, increased mobility. I think that the city of Fresno is ripe in that and that it is important that we continue to invest. These are just, you know, two, a couple of the main corridors that are going to help in building, continuing to build that grid that we do need. And while maybe only thirteen people were riding the bus coming from the north to the south, I believe that ridership would increase if our frequency would improve, if our buses were on time, if we had more reliability. I know that I would definitely ride the bus if I knew that I could count on it. And I know a lot of other people would too because I am actually, I teach at Fresno City College, and I hear it from my students all the time. It takes them sometimes two hours to get to City College. So, in terms of looking at the improvements that this is going to provide for my students, I'm excited about it. I also know that some of the benefits, we, people can save on fuel, will reduce some congestion that is already happening in the city of Fresno. And I think there are other increased property values. If we look at some of the studies, we know that there are increased property values for those that are located near corridors or frequent lines. So, let's remember about all those other benefits. We know that we, here in the state of California, we're trying to reduce our carbon footprint. This is another value that will bring, especially when we live in an area where we have such issues with air quality issues. And I think one of the really most important ones is that it drives community growth and revitalization, and that is what we're committed to doing here in the city of Fresno. For every one dollar invested in public transit, we know that it generates four dollars in economic returns. That's according to public transit studies. We also know that for every ten million dollars in capital investments in public transportation, it yields thirty million dollars in increased business sales. So, this is a good project for our community, not only for the residents that will get to ride it, but also for economic development within our city. And with high-speed rail coming and looking at the integrations of our public transit system, because public transit is not just about buses, it's about looking at bike, bike ride shares and other forms of transportations here within the city of Fresno. So, I'm excited to actually be able to cast a vote today in support. I appreciate the time that you guys have taken to look at how is it that we're going to ensure that we are funding the best project and that we're not, you know, jeopardizing the integrity of what was originally voted by being creative and looking at other alternative sources. I want to thank you guys for the time.
Member Quintero.
I'll just make some final comments on that. You know, I recall when this first started, we had like three or four meetings out in the district with business people, neighborhood folks. City manager attended some of those, and there was a lot of clarification that needed to be done, as well as the concern for the costs and taking out some of the sidewalks in front of businesses. I mean, it was just a potpourri of concerns that were going on. And, you know, one of the comments I heard on the dais today is that, where's the ridership coming from? And, you know, just knowing from District Five, and I know there's similarities in all the districts, well, I'll tell you where the ridership's coming from. We have the senior rest homes in the district, Las Casitas. We've got one at Chestnut and Tulare, Senior Citizens Village, Vintage Gardens, Armenian Rest Home, Twilight Haven. And then the educational components that we have are Fresno Pacific, students that ride the bus to go to City College in Fresno State. We have folks that are, you know, your largest generation of baby boomers coming in now that are going to have to make a lot of cutbacks in order to make ends meet at the end of the month. So, I really believe that there's going to be ridership coming from that group of folks. You know, the other events and social services, you have a big social services center that provides services to the folks that are in need of the services right there at Kings Canyon and Cedar. I mean, that's a big cluster there of services that are being offered. And then you mentioned the once-a-year, the Big Fresno Fair. I mean, what kind of ridership does that bring in to Route Twenty-eight? And so, to me, I mean, that's where the money's coming from. I mean, it's, it's just, to me, it's good planning and, you know, as stated earlier, it's not coming, it's not affecting our general fund in any way. And the other part that I said, I mean, you've done your due diligence and really cut it back as much as possible. It's come a long ways since its inception. I recall the accordion buses that were being mentioned at first and how much that was going to have of an effect. But I really believe that with all those things in place, that, you know, it's still, we're still a ways from the economy getting better, and folks are going to realize the value of using the buses, especially with the new services that we'll be able to provide and the updating that we'll provide, and especially with the corridors that are being mentioned today, the Blackstone and Ventura Kings Canyon corridors, those are definitely going to attract new businesses coming into the area that folks are going to need. And so, I really believe that it's, we're probably as close as good as it's going to get. And that was my reason for wanting to support it, and making the motion as well because of the existing ridership that you have is only going to get better. Not that it's as best as it could be, but, you know, folks are going to age and need the services as well. So, I just want to thank you for bringing it to this day today and taking it forward. So, I thank my colleagues that are going to support it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Member Brandow.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to respond to a couple of the comments about this wonderful article that I talked about, all right? So, I talked about transit was down in LA, and Councilman Baines said it's not fair to use this article because we're not Los Angeles. So, I'm just going to ask Bruce Rudd, or it's our city manager, is transit ridership down in Fresno?
Yeah, transit ridership has been down.
Thank you, Bruce. Yes. The man just said.
May I finish? So, transit ridership is down in the city of Fresno, has been for the last three years, four years. Some of it has to do with the reduction of service, we eliminated night service. More importantly, the underlying issue that you pointed out in your article, I'm not sure about the source, and I agree with, we're comparing fixed guideway light rail systems that once you put them in, you can't put them out, take them out, which is why the Federal Transit Administration is no longer investing in these kind of systems. They're actually investing in Bus Rapid Transit because of the flexibility that it provides. But my point taken is that LA and their land use planning, or the lack thereof, resulted in it making very difficult for people to get from point A to point B because of where they choose to live or work. So, the investment in light rail, while it did prove effect, it was being driven part and parcel by the fact that people were being, and land use decisions that didn't take into consideration the long-term effects from an environmental standpoint, as well as an infrastructure. This council, by adoption of the general plan, recognized that reality, that we don't want to be in LA. We do not want to create the sprawl that contributed to LA being the one of the worst air basins in the entire world, if not country. Second part, this council has also approved and supported other decisions to improve bus service along Shaw Avenue. We have Shaw Fifteen that's going to be coming online about the same time BRT. You just approved us to apply for a grant that would extend that fifteen-minute headway out to Highway City. You also approved that same grant that will allow us to go to fifteen minutes on Cedar Avenue. And in order to increase ridership, we have collectively said that we realize that our land use decisions has resulted in our transit system diluting the level of service that it can provide to its core ridership in order to meet the needs of a handful of people at the expense of everybody else. So, it does take two hours to get from wherever the student goes to Fresno City College because land use decisions have resulted in people living so far away from the grid that we end up putting out lifeline service out here in the middle of someplace in order to meet that need at the expense of everyone else who's trying to ride to get to Fresno State or up and down Blackstone and/or Shaw or Cedar. So, the decisions have been made, and we have approved grant applications to go forward to not only improve service on Blackstone, to improve service on Shaw, and to improve service on Cedar, and to reverse those decisions that have been made in the past to continue to dilute service out further and further and further as a result of land use decisions, which, again, the general plan will help to mitigate by intensifying the residential and retail opportunities along those three corridors. Thank you, sir.
All right. Look, thank you, Bruce, for that extended answer, okay? However, transit is down in the state of California. I just met with Scott Moser in District Two the other day. My roads are falling apart in Fresno, in District Two, and we're spending our money on transit, okay? The ridership is down. We can argue this all day long. California can invest in transit and let our roads go to hell. That's what's happening. It's what's been happening. I'm here to say, if you want to let it happen in Fresno, fine. I'm not going to vote for it, John. So, I just want to let you know, that's where my argument comes from. What's happening in Los Angeles is not just about Los Angeles. And Councilmember Soria, I am heavily invested in buses in the city of Fresno. But I, in my example, I believe we need to spend our dollars on building a better grid so people get from A to B rather than a super fancy Bus Rapid Transit on two streets. Thank you for the time, Council President.
You're welcome. Of course, former president.
Yeah, since the response was largely directed at me, let me say something really quick to my friend and dear colleague. You know, he just gave the public a false argument, which is, it's a false argument. These are not, these are not choices of or. And it's a false argument to make the public believe that we are making a choice to invest in transit instead of roads. We all know that that is not happening. And this, and this presentation, and this item that we're voting on today is not about a choice of whether or not we are investing in roads or transit. We need both. And the argument that is always presented to the public is that we have to make a choice of or. It's a false argument. It does not exist. Everything we do here is based off of a system of needs, of balance of everything. We don't, this money that we are voting on today cannot be used for roads. I want to make sure the public understands that. This money is for our transit system. That's what it's for. Now, do we need money for roads? We most certainly do. And instead of, instead of arguing about or, we ought to be asking the state and the federal government for and. But we give false choices to the public, and in my opinion, it's wrong to do that. This- This is about transit right now. So let's have an honest debate about what our choices are and about what we're voting on today. It's not about roads. The roads in District Three are falling apart too, Councilman Brandow, as you know. The roads in District Four, Five, and Seven, and One, maybe the only one is not Six. But we understand that, and we take votes every single week to ensure that we are investing dollars back in our roads. And you know that. We all know that. We need a complete city. We need to have an integrated, well-run, well-managed transit system, and we need good roads for our residents. So we ought to stop presenting false choices to the public. We ought to be here to deliver it to you all. So this vote today is not about roads, nor can this money be allocated towards roads.
Okay, folks, with our due process and procedure, it's 10:01, so we're going to go to a timed item as per my promises to the public and to everyone else. So we're going to table this for a moment and take the 10 o'clock item. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President, can we call for the question?
We certainly can.
Point of order.
Yes, Councilmember Olivier.
Since this is going to be running through my district, I don't wish to have a point of order. I'd like to make a motion that we stay with the BRT item. I do believe it's close to finishing, but I think that there are some folks here on the BRT item and as well as FACS staff, I would like to finish it.
That's fine. We'll trail this till after the 10 o'clock matter. Thank you all for working with me on this.
Wait, I'm sorry, what?
I think we're just going to call a halt to this lively debate, and we're going to go to the 10 o'clock item.
Okay, point of order, can I make a motion that we finish the item? Is it City Attorney, is that possible, instead of just moving?
Yes, you may.
Well, no, I still have some remarks I'd like to make.
You can have one or the other, sir.
I don't understand.
We can call for the question, or we can continue your remarks after the 10 o'clock item, whatever your pleasure is, colleagues. We pretty much, we've pretty well talked this issue to death, but I understand.
Are you asking, you just want to, what do you want to do, Councilman Olivier?
I was just going to call Mr. Stites up from ATU to find out where they...
So you want to finish the item?
I kind of would like to just finish the item.
Okay, well, we can either do that by consensus or vote or what have you.
I don't want to have to outvote anyone. I just think that we're five minutes from it being resolved, and I would ask Council President if we could just finish.
All right, listen. I think we can do this in a minute apiece, and if we can't, at 10:05, I'm going to the 10 o'clock item. That's it. I'm the president, that's a rule, we're going to follow it. I apologize to the 10 o'clock people that are, we're three minutes late, but we're going to remedy this, so. Well, Councilman Olivier, if you want to wrap it up in a minute, please.
Yeah, Mr. Stites, we come up, say if he were, while he's on his way to the lectern, I just wanted to say, look, folks, there are a lot of needs in our city in terms of roads, in terms of transportation, in terms of our FACS system. We just voted on $600,000 a few weeks ago to study, not even to fix, but to study the ADA situation in relation to our bus stops. I've been up here, I've been harassing Mr. Marshall for years to talk about what I believe to be the deplorable condition of our bus stops here in our city. But we can't use the money that's coming to the city of Fresno FACS Department. We can't use the money to fix our bus stops. We can't use the money to make the bus stops ADA compliant. They've got us between a rock and a hard place. And so I agree with all of you. Everyone that's made comments here on this item has been correct. Even you, Councilmember Brandow, you've been right. And so have you, Councilmember Baines. We've really got us between a rock and a hard place. We have to make the best decision for not just our districts, but for people citywide. And so this one is a tough one, and I don't disagree with anyone. But I just think that, I think that the BRT proposal that we see today is good, that it's been value engineered or watered down or whatever you want to call it. But I think that the administration's on the right track, and that's why I support them. But I did want to hear from our friends in ATU. Mr. Stites, of all of our collective bargaining folks, Mr. Stites is, I believe, most interested in the experience of the end user. In addition to his members, he's interested in the experience of the end user, which is our bus rider. So I wanted to hear from you, where are you at on this? Where are your members at?
I will agree with staff. This money is earmarked for BRT. The council took action, I don't know, a year and a half, two years ago, to go forward with it. I was not in favor of it. I still have reservations. I agree with Mr. Brandow's comments about the streets, but I don't believe that this money can be used to fix our streets. This is for BRT. It's obviously over budget by $4 million plus. I've met with some of the city staff. They're going to meet with a bidder, as I believe it's been explained to you, to reduce those costs, which I'm in favor of. I don't think you need Wi-Fi on a bus. Some of the structures are, I think, were bid out to be stationary and not removable. I think that's going to be adjusted. Getting the cost down to where it's no money from the department or the general fund, I think that's the way to go. I don't think there's any stopping it. Hopefully, it'll be the best thing for the city as things go forward. I do disagree with Bruce Rudd that we should consider limiting ourselves to lifelines, providing service out to various parts of the city or new developments that are going on. Federal money comes partly to Fresno through the cog based on population, okay? If you're going to provide transit to the population, then you give it to everybody in the city, regardless if it's a 15-minute service or an hour service. I'd much rather walk, I'd much rather take a bus from River Park to downtown if I have to wait an hour. If I'm walking, it takes about two or three hours. But I believe that this thing should probably go forward today. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And just my final remark is that I think we should pass this today, folks. But I think that we should also pass it with a warning to our administration and to our FACS people that we are watching, and we will continue to be vigilant, and we will continue to be disturbed when bus stops are dirty and the trash cans are overflowing and our buses are filthy. We will continue to be disturbed, and we will continue to work hand in hand with the administration to fix those things going forward. And it's not an either-or, it's a both-and. And we will move forward as a body and as a city. So I thank you all for your time, and I thank you all for your really good comments on this. And, Mr. President, thank you for hearing us.
One more comment from Councilmember Brandow.
All right, I've got 60 seconds. So all I want to clarify is a mischaracterization about Councilman Baines' question about we should be having both. That is fantastic, Councilman Baines. That's unfortunate, it's not the world that we live in. And we are getting pushed towards transit. Our own general plan, which you voted for and I did not vote for, says that of all the trips taken in Fresno County, 3.5% of them, somewhere around there, is taken on public transit. The other 96.5% is taken on Fresno County roadways, okay? But the money being prescribed to the city of Fresno is for transit projects. For that 3.5%, the rest of us, the 96.5%, are suffering like hell out on those roads. So I wish it was both, but it's not both. That's not the world that we live. We have to prioritize, and my vote today is going to reflect that prioritization. So I appreciate all the time, Council President.
You're very timely, and I appreciate that. Okay. Screen is clear. We have a motion by Councilmember Quintero, seconded by Councilmember Baines. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We, 5-2 with Councilmembers Brandow and Brand voting no. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to move to the 10 o'clock item. Again, I apologize for that delay. It won't happen again, I assure you of that. Good morning.
Good morning. Should I go ahead and announce the title?
Please.
I'm Karana Hattersley-Dreton, Historic Preservation Project Manager for the city of Fresno. I'm here on behalf of our department, DARM, Development and Resource Management, and as well as the Historic Preservation Commission. Upon request of Council President, we are not doing a visual presentation, but I do have slides of one particular item if you request them. We have forwarded to you five items for your consideration for the local register of historic resources. I think it's nice to point out that three of those are located in the Lowell neighborhood, and all three were once serious code violations and, in fact, in danger of being demolished. So that's pretty exciting to see them come back, be completely restored. Designation of four of the five items before you are supported by the property owners. The designation of the commercial buildings located on the property owned by Producers Dairy are not supported by the property owner. The property owner, their representative, brought them to us as part of our demolition review policy under our general plan. And of course, that is discussed in the staff report, which you have. Council can, pursuant to our ordinance, designate buildings over the objection of a property owner. Doesn't happen too often, but it certainly has happened. The property owner has asked for Producers Dairy to have these considered under our demolition policy because they are losing some of their truck parking due to high-speed rail. I understand from High-Speed Rail Right-of-Way Authority staff yesterday, because we've been working with them, that they actually have found Producers Dairy a suitable location. However, that does not preclude the owner from still requesting having the buildings demolished if that is their desire. It is important to note that both the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as the Tower District Design Review Committee, support the designation of the oldest parts of these buildings, street elevations. They are also conditioned under an EIR adopted by this council as part of the Tower District Design Review, the specific plan. So there are some very definite SEQA issues in front of you, not just historic preservation. That's the end of my quick presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll take this out to the public. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this item? Please give us your name and address. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Casey Austin. I am here on behalf of Producers Dairy, the 450 East Belmont location. I'm also here with Victor Lay, Producers Dairy, the Shahadi family's legal counsel. Producers Dairy recognizes that this process requires this evaluation prior to a demolition permit. However, the Shahadi family, owners of Producers family, request that the demo be granted, a request for a demo permit be granted due to the impacts of high-speed rail and the increased production of our facilities. Just a few little facts here. They are 24/7 production.
Casey, could you get a little closer to the mic, please?
They are 24/7 production.
Bend it toward you, and you'll be more comfortable, I think. There you go. Thank you.
And they produce over a million gallons a week in milk alone. That's not counting their ice cream, their orange juice, everything else Producers... She is correct that, I'm sorry, Karana, is it? Is correct that the authority has provided a suitable, however very temporary, location. It is a location that will be affected by high-speed rail eventually as well. It is the Shahadi's family's belief that this property no longer possesses historic integrity and could be a public liability. Up until the Shahadi family purchased it, it was used, and purchased it, boarded it, fenced it, it was used for many illegal activities and causing great blight in that general community. Producers family has also had their architects and engineers explore other options, explore the possibility of the facade, preserving the facade. None of them are feasible, according to the engineers, as well as the architects for I apologize. I would also like to point out that the Producers family has been a longstanding family in the community. They have worked very hard to make their community stronger and better, and they accept and embrace the fact that they are only as strong as the community around them. And this new construction would not only eliminate blight, a blighted building, but would also help a much-needed area. Any questions for me? I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public like to come forward and comment on this particular item? I see a lot of familiar faces out there. Please state your name and address for the record.
John Simmons, 1440 East Visadero. I am a member of the Historic Preservation Commission and longtime chair of that commission, but I'm speaking as a neighbor in the Lowell community and a person who is engaged in a lot of travel in that area. There we go.
Thank you.
I would urge that council adopt a resolution for the designation of all five of these properties for the local register of historic places. The person before me just mentioned that this would clean some blight in the area. And I would like to suggest that by their own admission, for over 24 years, they did not care for this building. And this comes to the idea that if a property owner allows a building to go into disrepair, then somehow or another demolition seems to be the only answer for that. We refer to that as demolition by neglect. These buildings have been neglected, but they do have a significant history. They do tell a significant story. These buildings could be a part of the rehabilitation revitalization of this section of Belmont. And I would urge the council to strongly look into some of the reasons why they would want to demolish this instead of put this on the local register for its preservation. Buildings like this are important to the city of Fresno. We don't have Taj Mahal-type buildings, but we do have vernacular, common, everyday ice cream factories that tell us who we are, and our children need to see buildings like this standing. And so I would urge the council particularly to understand that historic preservation can save the city money if these buildings were properly cared for. Several of these buildings have caused so much in code enforcement, police actions, and other activities. Now they are contributing to the community. The Producers Dairy building on Belmont could do the same thing. I would urge you to vote in favor of designation.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for your service of the commission.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the community wish to come forward? Please do so, and your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Caprillo. My name is Bruce Odom. My address is 718 East Carmen Avenue in the Wilson Island Historic District. I am appearing before you today in support of these designations to our local register of all of these structures, but especially the Producers property at Belmont and Fergar Avenue. I took the opportunity to drive by that building this morning, although I live close by. It's been a while since I've driven around the neighborhood, especially the residential neighborhood, south of Belmont. There are remarkable structures in that neighborhood worthy of a historic district itself. I see historic designations of properties in Fresno as a revitalization tool, as a tool to stabilize our neighborhoods, to make people care about our neighborhoods, and to reduce crime, gang activity, and other aspects of social behavior that we're trying to eliminate. This property would be perfectly suited for a neighborhood use. It should be zoned for a neighborhood use. What about doctor's offices? What about a charter school? What about a brew pub? What about an ice cream store? There are many, many uses for this structure that would really stabilize this neighborhood and be a benefit to it. What this neighborhood does not need is another truck parking lot. It's surrounded by industrial uses now, and as I said, there are some beautiful and remarkable houses just south of Belmont. You should drive through and see it yourself. So in conclusion, I would just like to say, if we're serious about stabilizing our neighborhoods, we should look at historic districts, historic designations, as a way of accomplishing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Patience Murak? Patience Milrod.
Council President Capriolo, members of the council. My name is Patience Milrod, 844 North Van Ness Avenue in the Tower District. I agree with Mr. Odom, truck parking isn't so wonderful there, but I think it's a reality at least for the moment, unless and until there's some reconsideration of the land use designation there. What I do want to call to the council's attention is that it may be very problematic to, I think actually a demolition permit is not available to this property owner because there is a mandatory mitigation measure that has been passed by ordinance, the city council 25 years ago, not this exact one, but your body, passed a mandatory mitigation ordinance. As mandatory mitigation measure is part of the ordinance adopting the tower plan, it said, "You producers have got to maintain the facade and you must preserve this historic building." So I don't think, no matter whether you designate it or not, I don't think they can demolish it, at least not without some expensive and additional procedures, which, you know, hopefully that won't be necessary, because I do support the designation. So that's one issue. Another issue that I think is really important is that it's not as though producers had this requirement dumped on them. I sat in meetings with Mr. Shahadi where we figured out 25 years ago, as the tower plan was getting created and as these mitigation measures were being developed, we sat together, a number of us from the Tower Plan Committee and the Shahadis and Producers Dairy, and we talked about, well, what can you do? What's feasible? And we hammered out these mitigation measures that are reflected and that were adopted as an ordinance by the council. So it's not like, oh, all of a sudden this unfair thing is happening to them. I do agree with Mr. Simmons, since that time, Producers Dairy has had a responsibility to maintain and preserve this historic resource. Now, if they didn't do that, whose fault is that? So I'm a little less sympathetic to that argument that it's, you know, P.S., they did not bring to Design Review Committee their architects' assessments, their engineers' assessments, we're supposed to take their word for it, that this is infeasible, and I think we need them to prove that if they want to get around the mitigation measure. So and finally, preserving the facade and preserving that corner building are not inconsistent with truck parking. They've got truck parking there. They can still have truck parking there. I don't like it, but you know, I think, as I say, it's a fact of life. So please designate this property and help us preserve our neighborhood, and producers can have what they need out of the property at the same time. And you avoid the problem with the mitigation measure, which would be wise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from our community wish to come forward and speak on the item? Please do so. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it up here to Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you, Council President Capriolo. This is an important item, and I think that I want to get a good, I want to get more information for members of the council. I understand City Manager Director Clark, that four out of five of the properties, and also for Karana, so four out of five are okay with what's happening today? Correct. Okay, so we have the one, which is Producers, at 450 East Belmont, that is not okay with this designation today? Correct. Okay. Do we have, and I can ask Casey this, the attorney you say for Producers is here? Okay, can you come forward so that I can just ask a couple of questions? Because I, you know, and I've said this before, sitting up here, that a lot, on a number of issues, especially urban issues, my heart and my feelings have changed on a number of these issues since I've been on council. And so, and this is one of those. I live in a 70-year-old home that was built in 1948. It's a Pasco Spano home, and it's beautiful. It's a post-World War II bungalow with hardwood floors from trees that originally were planted in the 1850s. And so we're really in love with our home, we're in love with our neighborhood. And so I understand a lot, not just a little bit, but a lot of what you're talking about. So I've softened over the years, but I still have a guiding principle of property rights. And so this is one of those where I'm, I mean, I think I know where I'm coming down on this one, but I'm very sympathetic to what the historic folks are trying to do. So I just had a couple of questions. Can you tell us your name?
My name is Victor Lee, V.I.C.T.O.R.L.E.I.
And you represent Producers?
Yeah, my position is General Counsel at Producers Dairy.
Was there a process that you went through with the city to come to some kind of resolution? Some, I mean, can you brief us on any talks between the city and your, and Producers?
To my understanding, there has been engagement with the City of Fresno in terms of the relevant departments. What's prompted this is the high-speed rail construction. We lease property at 302 Thorn Avenue, and they have accelerated their construction.
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. I know, I apologize. Okay. Pardon my leaning. So we lease property at 302 Thorn Avenue, and High-Speed Rail Authority has accelerated construction activity such that we're losing 20,000 square feet, and they have started that even this past week. And so in that respect, that leads to the urgency of the involvement and the steps here that are being taken.
So, and I might need some help on this. Do property owners have to apply to have their buildings listed, or people from the community can ask to have them listed? And maybe it's for Karana, but don't go away, I have a couple more questions.
Pursuant to the city's Historic Preservation Ordinance, which is Fresno Municipal Code 121600, the property owner, the city council, the secretary to the commission, a representative or the commission itself can request listing on the local register.
Not demolition. Come on, come on.
Not demolition, no. Excuse me. And yes, so I think that answers your question.
How many times, and while we've got you there, how many times in five years since I've been here have, because I always vote when a property owner comes and says, "I would love to be listed,"
Right.
I always support them, I always have. How many times has this council voted to designate a piece of property over the objection of the owner? I can't remember if we've ever done that before.
We have, you have, I know one for sure, and that was Liberty Laundry, that is probably more than five years ago. Normally, we don't bring items to you because we want to, we're trying to work with a property owner. I will say that two major resources, off the top of my head, way before my time, were put on the register over the objections of the property owner. One was St. John's Cathedral, and the other was the Southern Pacific Railroad Station.
And this was when?
Oh, that, those two were quite a long time ago.
So this council hasn't done it in like the last several years?
Let's see, it would have been part of the South Stadium project. And that's just off the top of my head. I'm sorry, I know that for sure.
Is there a way to resolve this with property? Since this hasn't happened in several years, I mean, is there a way to resolve this with property owners? Or are you here asking for this because we're at loggerheads and it just can't be worked out?
Well, that's a hard question. It really gets down to the definition of preservation. And I, you know, I'll just speak from my heart, you know, the city in its ordinance has been very eloquent about the importance of history and preservation for economic development, for sense of place, for our children, et cetera. But you do not have a historic preservation program if you only designate beautiful houses owned by the willing property owners. I have to tell you that. Usually, preservation and development, almost always, preservation loses. And I think you're hearing more and more from the public, preservationists want to see historic resources as part of our overall revitalization effort, and it really does pay to do that. So if that answers your question.
So if we don't designate today, then producers could apply for a permit?
They could apply for a permit, and this would be a city attorney question. My understanding that pursuant to the EIR mitigation, they would have to go through an environmental report of some kind that would probably take a year, but maybe Doug or Mary can speak to that. Because you already have in place mitigation measures that protect it, so.
So if we don't designate today, they could, producers could apply for a permit?
They could apply, but the council ultimately may still have to revisit the historic issue.
Okay, what does producers want to occur here today? I guess this is a question for you. What's your aim today? What do you want the outcome to be?
To recognize our position that this designation not occur.
Okay, and then what will?
Oh, sorry.
And then what will, I mean, look down the road. So this, the land that this building sits on is needed for parking because the parking where the, that they're using now, the rail authority is going to take to make the tracks.
Correct.
So the trucks have to park somewhere.
Correct.
What do they use this building for now? Is it in use, or is it, it's a derelict building?
It is vacant. While there have been efforts to keep the area in terms of compliance with city ordinance in terms of weeds and instructions, it is completely vacant because of the age of the building. So it is not within itself, it's not been used. There have, basically, it's unused right now.
Okay, is it unusable? I mean, is it, and I didn't see the picture, is it boarded up?
It is boarded up.
It's a blighted building.
It's old and where it's simply enclosed, so to keep people from breaking in, but it is unused, and so mostly it's the trail parking that's.
How much would it cost to bring it and make it a craft beer place, or a salon, or something like retail? Would it cost, I mean, ballpark of hundreds of thousands of dollars to?
That's our understanding, so.
Okay. Well, I mean, I want to hear, I want to hear what, it's in, I'm assuming it's in District Three or One, right? Okay, I don't even know why I spoke first. I apologize. You should be speaking, so I'm just going to go ahead and defer. I mean, if I were to make a motion, which I'll hold back, but if I were, it would be to have the four designated, because it's okay with the property owner, and then go ahead and take producers off the list. That would be my motion, but I won't be making that right now. Thank you all.
Councilmember Soria, my intention is to take the first four items separate from, one through four, separate from item five, since that's the controversial. One of the others are pretty, I think, pretty well established by the commission. So with that in mind, Councilmember Soria.
If that's the wish of the majority of the council, I would argue that I would like to actually take all of the items together, but if there's not a consensus there, then I'm okay with taking them separately. I will say that I am a supporter of preservation. I do believe that there is value in historic preservation in terms of our community and what it means. And so just a couple of questions, I know that my colleague already asked, but it is my understanding that there were some of the mitigating measures, Karana, that maybe the Tower District Design Review Committee offered, or I think were part of the report in terms of what they can do to the building?
There's, I think there's two issues. One is the mitigation that's part of an EIR from 25 years ago. Separate from that, I think you, because I know your staff was there, the Tower District Design Review Committee that met two weeks ago did adopt a resolution supporting, as the commission did, the preservation of the oldest streetscape portions of these buildings, meaning the 1929, 1930, 1932, not maybe a garage portion that's been tacked on behind or whatever. They felt very strongly that the streetscape was really important, and they didn't want to look at a wall of trucks, quote unquote.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
And the mitigation from the EIR is in your packet, and the city attorneys would probably can speak to that.
Okay, thank you. And so in terms of the building, at least from what I have heard, I haven't heard that it is completely unusable. I know that it has been allowed to become in disrepair. I think that to some degree is the responsibility of the property owner. I don't want to get in a situation where we're setting precedent and allowing property owners just to be neglectful with their properties, and then we're in a situation that we are today, right, trying to make a choice whether to demolish a building that it is part of Fresno's history so that we can park trucks and just demolish the building in itself. This afternoon, or this morning, I would be making a motion to support the recommendation of the commission, along with the staff's recommendation, to put it in the, as a historic designation.
Did you want to make a motion on all items, or should we separate the four from the one? Because it seems like that's a.
I can do either or.
Okay. So we have a motion to here, vote on items one through four with one vote, and then item five with a separate vote? Is that your motion?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Second by Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Brandell.
Thank you, Council President. Mrs. Austin, could I chit-chat with you for a second, please? Hi, Casey. Casey, do you represent, do you represent the client?
Producers Dairy, yes.
So you represent Producers, so that was just not your opinion earlier, your personal opinion, that's the position of Producers?
Of Producers Dairy.
Okay. So just do a real simple recap, because I thought I was clear on it, now I think I'm a little lost, so I need a recap. So in Producers' opinion, what's going on with this building?
Producers' opinion is they have preserved the building according to city code, as long as they have owned it. There are no violations. They are impacted by 47 trucks due to high-speed rail. They risk to take their property and make it more efficient for their company so that they can minimize the effects of high-speed rail has impacted them.
Okay. So in their opinion, this building stands in the way of?
Of their, of their business.
Of their business growth. Okay. And have they come up with any other alternate options for this building?
They have explored options. They, it is the opinion, my understanding of the architects and engineers for Producers, that they, the cost just would not be feasible to, for a facade, or to, you know, restructure it so it could be a craft beer place or an ice cream parlor.
Okay, okay. So in their opinion, they've tried, but they can't come up with any way of making this work and?
Exactly, exactly. And I think if you looked at the history of the Shahadi families, they've tried to be active, positive members of the community, and that they have been part of the backbone of the Tower District. I have lived in the Tower District my whole life. I own an 85-year-old home. I am a firm believer in preserving, but I'm also a private sector professional, and I'm a firm believer in allowing companies to have their growth, professional growth.
Okay. Thank you, Casey. Karana, I have a couple of questions for you now. Karana, I was.
I do have pictures, too, if you request them.
Oh, now.
You have your survey forms.
Now, yeah, council gets to see those pictures. I'd love for the public to see them.
If you have a minute?
Can you just pop them up while you and I talk a little bit? That way the public would at least get a chance to see what the building looks like that we're discussing, because I believe that's important.
Thank you, Karana, for being prepared with that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Karana. So this is the building?
These are the two buildings. There are two separate buildings that were built, 1929, 1930, 1932. So they are in Roosevelt and Belmont, and I'll just show you two more images real quickly, if I may. That's the location which shows you, you know, truck parking already at 2015. And that's when it was an ice cream parlor, so that's probably enough, but I do have other images if you would like them.
Got it, got it. Karana, are there any alternate views that you've come up with that can help producers, but then also help us with the saving of this building?
Well, this is an awkward situation, because they've come to us a couple of months ago in a meeting, their representative, who's sick today, could not be here, and just said because of high-speed rail, they wanted to pursue, you know, using their entire parcel and demolishing the buildings, and because of, because we knew from years back, that even before we knew that there was mitigation in the EIR, we knew that the Tower District Design Review Committee in the past had felt very strongly about it. We knew that this would be a portion of our demolition review. I will say that every year, I personally review 50 to 100 demolition permits, and this is the first one in over a year, maybe two years, that is, maybe more than that, that's come to council. So we're really quite careful. We only bring to the commission and then to the council any building or resource that we really feel meets that very high threshold for individual eligibility. It's a pretty high threshold. So, you know, I do know that they are pushed. So, you know, I do know that they are pushed for parking. We feel that there is a lot of parking on this parcel already. I don't know what else to say. We've asked for structural analysis and architecture reports, which they've alluded to today. We've not received them. And we know our engineers and architects have, you know, just walked the property, but have not done an inspection. So, you know, one could say we're lacking some information of that sort. I'm not sure if I'm really answering your question, Councilmember Brandal. I'm trying.
No, and most of it you did, so I have a couple of follow-up questions. So, what would you, what are your, what would you plan to do with that building?
Well, I don't have the right to do anything with it, and I think that's an important.
Who does? So, here's my question. So, if we just grant that building, so Producers would like it moved for the purpose of their business and our local economy, but we say, no, we don't want you to move it, then do we just let it sit there indefinitely?
Well, if it's a designated historic property, it is conditioned in a somewhat different way than just your vacant blight ordinances. It does have to meet a certain threshold for maintaining its historic integrity, and I think we might encourage.
Okay, Karana, but that's still just letting that building sit there indefinitely, right? I mean, we have to, it has to maintain, to be on that list, it has to maintain a certain integrity, but you're not talking about refurbishing it as an ice cream parlor.
I, no, the planning department does not have that kind of, you know, budget funds, whatever. We're always happy to work with somebody to find as many creative ideas as possible. I do want to remind folks, and this is hard, it's really hard, that sometimes patience is important, sometimes it's not. Sometimes a building, like with Warehouse Row, got to the point that it was so dangerous, no matter how historic, we had to ask, have it demolished. However, we have old administration building at Fresno City College. It's a jewel now.
Yes.
That's out there for 30 years. So, it's tough. I don't want to pretend that it's not.
Yeah, and so, and so, here's where I always get jammed up on these questions about, you know, historic resources. By the way, I have one out in District Two I want to talk to you about.
Uh-huh.
On Palm Avenue, I think you know.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, however, so, and this building seems to be a real big building. It's not small, like the house in District Two I'm going to talk to you about.
There are actually two buildings.
The two buildings, right.
And they take, you know, the northwest corner of Roosevelt and Belmont. So, what both the commission and the Tower District have called out is the street elevations, not perhaps, you know, the very back portion, et cetera.
So, the building that the blue arrow is pointing to in the other photo was the building on the right. It seems to be like a real big building. The second building, not so much, is that right?
Yeah, the one to the south is the slightly newer, that was the ice cream producer building.
What, I mean, in these historic buildings, I read an article the other day about a Civil War battlefield, and they did everything they could to preserve a building, but it actually got blown over in a windstorm. They, I think it was Investor Business Daily. So, but then they rebuilt, then they just picked up as much of the building as they could and rebuilt it in a slightly different location where the foundation was more secure for the future. It stayed there, it was, it was still on, on the battlefield, but in a different spot. Are there any other, or do we ever get any valid options on these buildings? Like, could high-speed rail help us take this building and move it somewhere where we could actually restore it? Maybe in a park in Fresno somewhere, or somewhere where people could view it and see it. Right now, it's right in the middle of this business complex. Or do we ever look at these, as far as creating solutions? Or is it always just, there's that building, we're going to let the spiders continue and the rats continue in perpetuity, and in the meantime, we give this, set back this business's plan?
Well, there's, I think, three answers to that. One, indeed, in the past, Armenian Town, we did relocate buildings and have a whole park, if you will, of Armenian-owned, former Armenian-owned houses, which are gorgeous. So, the city and RDA together have worked to do projects like that. A brick building does not move well, although I will say, in the 19th and early 20th century, they did it. They did things that we don't, you know, try to do today. You do have facade, I think, I think the other issue that I've heard from the community and that we all feel is that if that was, if that facade is gone, you're just looking at trucks. And there's also some concern, not a historic concern, but an environmental concern about yet additional truck foams, et cetera. This is all a residential neighborhood. So, I think it's the street elevations, it's trying to move brick, oh, difficult. And I will say, we did, when this first came up, I called the environmental folks at High Speed Rail, because we work with them all the time, and I said, I think you're making an impact here. And they said, oh, no, no, it's too far away. We're, you know, we're giving them another place to park. So, so, in terms of high-speed rail, Councilmember Brandal, I don't, I think they are compensating Producers, but not necessarily for these buildings per se. My understanding is they are compensating them for the loss of parking, but I have not been able to get them to own up to any impact to these buildings.
Well, I'll tell you what, Karana, I wish, I wish there was a way we could get maybe help from High Speed Rail. Take this brick building, they did it in the 1920s, and they built dams in the 1920s, and we could move this brick building into somewhere, maybe turn it back into an ice cream parlor, let the citizens of Fresno County really enjoy this building, rather than it just sit there and create a hindrance for a business, a very valuable business in Fresno. So, I don't know if there, if there, if there would be time to investigate that, but, what's that? There is, there is time. Are you going to speak after me? All right. Councilman Baines is going to come back to the light and agree with me here in a minute. And, so, unless, unless we can get, I'm just going to let the public know where I'm at on these type of issues. The four buildings that don't pose a problem, I'm fine with putting them on the historical register, that kind of stuff, I'm very supportive of. I want to talk to you about one in District Two, residents. But this building seems to be a particular hindrance to this business, and without a solution, without revitalizing this building or bringing it back in any condition where it's really of value, now, I would probably vote with the business on this one. So, I'm going to listen to my fellow council members and see if they want to investigate the thought of doing something with that building.
Before we move to the, to Councilmember Baines, Brian, did we forget anything on that previous issue? We did, we needed to vote separately on the two? Okay. Colleagues, remind me, clean that one up first.
What's the question?
The BRT.
We can recess this and then we'll.
Yeah, let's recess this for just a couple of minutes, folks.
The vote was for the BRT elements, and the next vote then would be for Measure C.
We didn't get to 2C on our agenda. Okay.
Yeah, so, to be quick and take, without taking the risk of earning the blah, blah, blah word myself, staff recommends that council approve the department pursuing the $4.000 million Measure C new tech funds.
And I think the motion by Member Quintero, seconded by Member Baines, included 2C. Is that correct? Yes, it is. So, all those in favor? Opposed?
No.
Pass the 7-0. Or, I'm sorry, 5-2 with.
This is for the, the grant?
This is a separate thing.
This is the second one.
This is the grant.
So, it's the grant, Councilmember Brandal.
Okay, all right. Why don't you? Hey, Brian, I've got a quick question. This, this was about the second part, okay?
Yes.
We got, I was right in the middle of a brick building here, but, but, on that, on the, on the new tech fund within Measure C, I sit on FCTA, so I got to pay attention to this one. On the new tech fund within Measure C, okay, what types of projects can that new tech fund cover? Do you, are you, do you know, or are you just specifically asking for the stuff that you know about? Are there other things that that tech fund could?
Yeah, there were, there were some specific things, like off-board fare collection, directional signage, informational signage, and then there's another kind of broader category that says anything that will enhance the travel experience.
Okay.
So, those are the basic categories.
All right. I'll probably, I'll probably call over to COG and find out all the other things that are options for us on that tech fund. That's what I need to clarify.
If I, if I could, maybe I could help you.
Yes.
Since I helped write some of the underlying programming in the Measure C expansion plan. It is designated, or the intent was to fund advanced technology systems or elements for transportation, period. Advanced transportation. So, the items that Mr. Marshall has identified, in our opinion, qualify, because it is advanced technology. It's not something that was in place 10 years ago when the measure was put into place. It could also be used for things like personal rapid transit systems, which is elevated guideway, which I know you would oppose, because it is a fixed guideway system which can't be moved, which is so consistent with your comments about light rail. It could be used for that, but again, as you would probably point out, it's not cost-effective.
Okay. So, Bruce, this is that high-tech fund that's never been used so far?
Correct.
Within Measure C?
Correct.
So, that, okay. You know, Bruce, thank you very much for bringing up the personal transportation system. So, this high-tech fund within Measure C was dreamt up and added to our Measure C tax dollars, just for the public to know, Councilman Baines, for a personal kind of, a personal transportation device. I don't even know how else to, it's a pod. You sit in a pod and you get, it's like the Jetsons. Now, this was, this happened 15 years ago. Right on. It's the way people think. I don't know why we're not so, maybe we should be supporting that today. But anyway, thank you, Bruce, for reminding me. Thank you, Brian, for talking to me about this new tech fund. I will be supporting our attempt to gain these funds for the city of Fresno.
Thank you. So, so, we have a motion to approve item 2C. All those in favor? Opposed? Pass the 7-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you again.
Thank you. Sorry about that. And I just want to apologize to the 10:15 people that are here. I've lost control of the asylum. I'm sorry. All right, now, back to the screen. Wow. Okay, it's one of those days. So, Councilmember Baines, for the first time.
Thank you, Council President. So, I'm listening to this discussion about this house, and I can, or about this building, and I can tell you that over the last couple of years, I certainly gained a greater respect for preservation, maybe more so than I did when I first joined the council. And when I, when I look at the building, in my opinion, and a lot of times, this does unfortunately come down to opinion more than science. In my opinion, this is a building that should, should be preserved. I mean, it's, I love the brick buildings, so. But I do like my colleagues' line of questioning, Councilmember Brandal, about engaging the authority on helping us navigate this process. I think it's a very worthwhile request. It is one that, as far as I can hear, has not been explored. Is that right, Karana? We have not engaged with the authority, High Speed Rail Authority, to?
Actually, we have informally engaged with them. By that, I mean, because I almost daily have to review projects and work with the, a variety of staff from High Speed Rail. I did, when this issue came up, I did call the environmental folks in Sacramento, and I said, you know, I think you're impacting some buildings here, and, you know, what about that? And they said, oh, no, no, no.
But let me just kind of get to where I'm going with this. Have we asked the authority to come in and lend potential resources to what we're trying to do? Councilmember Brandal mentioned maybe moving the building. I know you said that may be difficult, but obviously, it's possible. Have we talked about anything they can do to help with the facade improvement to the business, so the business doesn't bear that expense? Have we explored that specifically?
We, we have not had a formal meeting on that subject. We could, we could request that.
I think that would be prudent.
But then, you would have a conflict potentially with the mitigation on the EIR. I'm just reminding you of it. It is complicated. This is not a, you know, either or situation.
Well, certainly. I mean, we, we don't want to suggest that it's not complicated, but we also want to see if there are potential solutions. I think that, I think that the majority of the body sees the value in this building, but also is, you know, you know, sympathetic to the business as well. So, it's, we're trying to figure out what the best path forward. So, what I'm going to do is, Council President, we already have this, this, these items bifurcated, right?
I'm sorry, say that again, sir.
Okay, the items are already bifurcated.
Correct.
What I would do is, since the item's already bifurcated, I would ask that we continue the one item, the Producers' item, and allow staff and the business owners to work with in some formal discussions with the authority to see what other options exist. I don't want to limit to what they are. Whatever, you know, I want creative minds to be at work, so I'm not going to get too prescriptive in my motion as far as what we should or should not do. But we may have some opportunities there, and I think that was brought up by Councilmember Brandal. If I can have either Casey or the lawyer for the family come forward, whomever wants to speak on behalf of the business is fine with me. Because as I go down this, this track, I want to make sure there's, is that something that you believe your clients would be okay with, at least sitting down and seeing if there are other options for preserving the building?
No, unfortunately, we're, we're out of time, and our position would be that we would object to this designation. High Speed Rail has been coming through and accelerated their schedule. Our process requires timely, it's not only just parking of trailers, these are being staged for deliveries that same day. Generally speaking, customers place their orders in the morning. All those orders are packaged or.
So, okay, well, let me, yeah, I don't want to go through the whole business operation, but, so, you're saying that if this, if we all said, hey, we want to allow a few weeks for you to sit down and get a resolution to this, you would be opposed to that?
We've been engaged in conversation with the authority, and there's been no indication of cooperation in that, in that area, so we, we need to.
Yeah, but, okay, so, but we haven't asked the authority, so I can appreciate that. So, are you saying you would be in opposition to trying to, for this? I want to get a pretty clear answer here.
We would, we would oppose, because we need the entirety of the space, the size of our trailers and, and the equipment that's being moved, and the turning radius and everything. We would need the entirety of that space.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, in light of your opposition, yeah, I, you know, forgive me for that. I hope that, I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a suggestion to this body that we move in that direction, despite your opposition, because I think that we want to try to do what's best overall for the community, and I think that there potentially is a pathway forward. So, you all can either decide to participate or not, if we decide to continue this and ask for formal participation by the authority to seek resolution on this. But Council President, that's what I'm going to, since the motion's already bifurcated, I don't know who made the motion in a second.
Member Soria moved to take items one through four, which seem to be very, very uncontroversial.
Right.
Separate from item five, which is somewhat controversial.
Okay. Councilmember Soria, with your indulgence, I would like to ask that we continue the fifth item, I don't know, for, Karana, you think we could, two weeks would be?
Well, I think it would be useful to ask for a month, because my understanding is on February 14th, they are moving their parking to that other site anyway. So, I think we do, I think Producers Dairy does have time. I have to say that.
Okay. Well, then, I'll say that we're going to continue this until the 20, the 28th, Councilmember Soria, that would be my request, to allow time to enter into a formal discussion with the authority, the city, and potentially, the owner of Producers to seek resolution in whatever form that may look like. So, with your indulgence, I would like to ask for that friendly amendment.
I will gladly accept that.
So, we.
Second? Who was the second on Councilmember Soria's motion? Me? I don't, I don't consent to that. That's unacceptable to me. I'd like to, I'd like to vote today. And I punched up again. I have, I have a couple more thoughts and some reasons.
Okay.
Why I feel that way.
Okay. City Attorney, can we have further discussion before the vote on the continuance, or is it?
Well, you can. I would recommend you just go ahead and dispense with one through four, and then you can deal with number five.
Yeah. And I can, and I can just, because it's a procedural item, I can just ask the continuance to stand alone anyway, right, City Attorney?
You.
I could just ask, I could just, I could have just asked for a continuation.
It would have to be a motion at this point.
Okay.
So, the continuation motion has a priority?
A procedural motion always has priority, yes.
Very good.
So I'll make that motion, so we can dispense with items 1 through 4, and if I have a second.
So if, if everyone is in agreement, we can call for the question on items 1 through 4, and then we can continue to discuss item 5. Okay, all those in favor of-
Let me just get my motion in. Councilmember Brandow was the second.
Okay.
For 1 through 4?
Right.
We had an original, original motion-
Yes.
For, so you were the second.
My continuing.
So we're good. We have a motion by Councilmember Baines, seconded by Councilmember Brandow, to, to address items 1 through 4 now, and then we'll come back to item 5. So, all those in favor of passing items 1 through 4, please say aye. And opposed? So that part passes 7-0. Yes, we got something done. Thank you. Restoration of leadership. Okay, now, back to item 5. And Councilmember Soria, is this second or three? I don't, second or third time? I don't, I have a whole screen full, so please, respect each other's time. Thank you, Ms. Soria.
Thank you, Council President. Just a few other things that I wanted to ask. And I know that one of the issues that keeps arising is the whole High Speed Rail and the impacts of it. At least in my experience and in working with High Speed Rail and other businesses in my district, I know that the High Speed Rail Authority actually has done a tremendous amount of work, and they work really hard with also our EDC to help in relocation. I believe that the impact is, in terms of the space for the trucks. I want to ask, maybe Casey, if you want to come up here, and you can speak to the options that High Speed Rail offered, because I'm assuming that not only do they compensate for the land that they have, the property that they have to take, but I know that they work very diligently to try to offer alternative locations. So this necessarily, this doesn't necessarily have to be the alternative location? Is, is that correct?
Well, what was offered were temporary locations while producers found a permanent location, and that to be negotiated with High Speed Rail after the permanent location was found. So they did find us a temporary one that we have for four to six months at OK Produce, that we are still working with the city and High Speed Rail to get it to fit the need of the 47 trucks, but we do not-
Okay, so then, so then even the four to six months provide us time to go back to High Speed 2?
Well, instruction still has to be done in that four to six months.
Hold on, I have, I have the four, and I want to continue just with my comment. So if there are four to six months temporarily, so we still have, that buys us enough time to go back to High Speed Rail, as suggested by my council colleague, to have a discussion as to what maybe other alternative locations or an alternative solution to the issue. The other question that I wanted to ask, how many, or how much space would the, the requirement of the facade take, take up? Like, how many trucks would that be, in terms of what has to remain there, in terms of the space?
Well, it's my understanding it's going to take up the turning radius, so the trucks wouldn't be allowed to turn of the facade would take. So it would probably, it would make that property unusable for what their needs are.
Completely unusable for the needs that-
For the need of storing for the trucks.
And then the, the other question that I have, I know that there has been conversations or comments that, there's been studies that show that these buildings can't be saved. I haven't seen anything. Have you guys been able to produce that to our staff to support your, the argument that these buildings aren't unusable?
You know, I'm going to refer to city staff Jennifer Clark on that one, because I know that she has worked with the producer's architect on this item.
Ms. Clark, while you come up, I just want to remind my colleagues, we're discussing whether to continue this item or not. So we can get into the deeper discussion if it is not continued. So maybe I didn't make that clear, so. That's how, the gist of this conversation is whether to continue it or not.
Well, this is my last question.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning. So as part of the process, as Karana had described before, so through, through a demolition request, it was, our city code states that we have to determine whether or not it is eligible for the local register. So staff provided that to the Historic Preservation Commission, who recommended to the city council that it may be eligible. At this point, there has been no official demolition permit request made, so no application for the permit request. However, when the application is submitted, the engineer would need to provide at that point in time determination that it would be infeasible to reuse the building and it needed to be demolished. It is our understanding, though, from conversations with the architect, that prior reviews and studies have determined that the, the building would not meet the California earthquake standards and could not be reutilized as, as it is, is being potentially proposed. So really, it's a stepped process, and it's necessary to go through the process, is it eligible or is it not eligible, so that then they can pursue their demolition permit. But they can, they can actually go through and apply for that permit at this point in time, but they would need to produce that engineer's report at that time to state that it was, would be infeasible to be either reused or, or moved.
Okay.
So we don't have a report-
It would come at a, at a later step.
It would come with the demolition permit, correct.
Okay. But it seems like, at least for purposes of some of the questions and comments that were made, that that would be something that, you know, could support either way, so my colleagues deciding whether they would designate as a historic, given if you can't use a building or so forth. Just kind of, you know, putting that out there in terms of being good information to have at, at this point in time. That was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Everyone seems to be punched up. Is there anyone in particular that wants to discuss the continuance aspect of this? Seeing none, now let's take a vote. All those who are in favor of continuing the matter say aye.
What's the question?
Continuance. All those in favor of continuing this item?
Yeah.
Well, let's see if we can continue it, then we'll pick a date, and it might take another hour, I don't know.
I, I mentioned the 28th. The 28th would be the, the, 25th?
This is 20.
I'm sorry, 25th. Thank you.
All those in favor of the continuance say aye.
Aye.
Here we have Councilmember Soria, Councilmember Baines, Councilmember Quintero saying continue. All those opposed to it?
No.
No? And four no's, so we're here at this, today. Okay, next. Again, apologize to the 10:30 people. Believe me, I'm pushing as hard as I can, but I'm running every minute of this process. Sal Quintero, thank you, sir.
So Council President, I'm sorry, did we just continue it or not continue it?
We did not continue it.
So it was a four-
Four three.
Who were the, who were the no votes?
You, um-
Can we do an electronic vote? Sure.
Wait a second, we need a full clarity then.
Okay. You want, you want, okay. The motion before our colleagues right now is, do we continue this motion to February 25th or not? If you support the continuance, that's a yes vote. If you oppose the continuance, that's a no vote. Please, please press-
Council President, point of order. So, was this the one of Councilman Baines was the motion and I was the second?
Yes.
Correct.
So, and then what, Councilman Baines, what do we need to have delivered on the 25th?
Well, it was, it was my direction to staff to see if there was a potential for resolution with the formal discussion with High Speed Rail. So we need to know that on the 25th.
Okay. And then, and then if, if we haven't heard back from High Speed Rail Authority on the 25th, we just pull the trigger on this vote? Is that right?
Well, I would assume if they're, if, if the, the item comes back for our consideration on the 25th, if there's no, no resolution, then yeah, we, we vote.
Is there a chance, we have a meeting next week, is there a chance you think that we, that next week is too long, or too short of time to get an understanding whether they would entertain this concept?
I would say so, but staff-
I would say just the time it takes to do a staff report and upload it and get it to you, it's two or three weeks just for that, much less to meet and have any kind of real discussion. So I think a month is, as soon as I would recommend.
We don't really have, and Councilmember Brandow, just for clarity, we don't necessarily have any, um, uh, time restrictions per se. We, we're not up against a clock for something for their demolition permit, we're not up against a clock for when they have to, you know, demolish the building. We don't have those type of time restrictions, so I think we can come back on the 25th and get a, get a thorough answer.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, but Producers has some time restrictions, so I'm, yeah, so we'll go for the 25th.
No, I mean, they don't have any time restrictions at this point. There's nothing that they've started that is restricting them, so that's why I think we're okay. I was, I was meeting them, not us.
Are you, ready to vote?
Electronic vote, Council President.
Wait, I'm confused.
Okay, here we go again.
Didn't we just vote on this? We voted four to three to hear it today, and, and, so now we're voting electronically on the same thing.
There was, there was, there was some uncertainty-
Okay.
-with who voted for what.
I get it. I've been uncertain before.
Okay, so now-
Right?
All right.
So, okay, so now we're gonna vote again. Yes is to delay till when?
25th.
Of, has to be February, right? Okay.
I would say yes.
Nothing gets past me. So-
Of 2016.
I hope every president, just folks, I hope every president in the past has had the first month of this type of, uh, meeting. It's been very, very informative for me, and I have my resignation on the day of my five o'clock today. Okay, now, a yes vote is to continue.
A no, February 25th, 2016.
And a no vote is to hear the matter today. Everybody okay? Now the matter will be continued to February 25th. Do I need to announce the votes, or?
Yes.
Yeah, I think you can see it, but the no votes are me, President Capriolio, Member Olivier, and Member Brand. Okay, the good news is, we're going on to the 10:15 item.
No, we're gonna finish talking about it.
No, the vote was to continue it to that date to vote on it, it was-
Aren't we gonna finish talking about it?
Do you want to finish talking about it today, colleagues, and then, I, I don't know how we can, though, if we, yeah, well, one, two, there's five people, and I haven't said anything all day, I'm just overwhelmed with this, this dialogue. But anyway, no, we'll, we'll move on, we'll hold the hearing on the 25th and keep that option open. Thank you. Okay. Wow. I wish you folks would come up here and see, see my, my area. It's total, I've got cards, I've got papers, I've got my notes. I haven't used this yet, I might use it on my own head. This is, so bear with us, I'm gonna clear the screen, and we're gonna move on, if I can find this item. Here we go. 10:15 item, Development Code, Pedestrian Access and Facade Design Development Standards. The public hearing on this was closed on December 17th, so this is more or less a cleanup process. And Dan, you're up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, members of the council. My name's Dan Zack, Assistant Director in the DARM Department. This is a continued item from December 17th. I'll give a quick bit of refresher background and then bring you up to speed on what has happened since we last discussed the subject, and then turn it back over to you. So the full development code came to the council on November 19th, while action was considered on the full document. It was requested by Councilmember Brand that this part of the document, which was pedestrian access and facade design standards, be brought back within 30 days for further consideration. And during that 30 days, it was requested that we work with the industry on potential refinements to make it work out a little bit better. So we did that. We convened two meetings with the industry led by Mayor Swearengen on December 2nd and December 9th, 2015. And the main thing that came out of that was that there needed to be a little less of a one-size-fits-all approach. We worked with the group to break the, the process into two routes for projects. One, that is, we called the flexibility option, one that we called the certainty option. The flexibility option would have goals that the applicant had to demonstrate they would meet, and then for folks that wanted a clearer, more certain process, the certainty option would have clear development standards, and if you met all those, then you would be approved. The other breakdown that came out of that was an urban versus suburban breakdown, recognizing that in further out neighborhoods, the emphasis on pedestrian access, for example, and some other things, might not be as essential, as in the closer-in neighborhoods closer to downtown. So we, we also built that urban versus suburban breakdown into it. Presented that at, to the industry group at the second meeting, and the consensus was that we had made appropriate revisions, listened to their needs, and there was general support by a majority of the, of the folks there. So we returned on December 17th, which was in the, within the 30 days that was requested. There was a lot of public comment and council discussion, and at that point, the council still felt that additional changes might be necessary, so the item was continued to January 7th, and then again to January 28th, where we are here today. During that intervening period, the mayor reconvened the industry group on January 13th to discuss some potential additional refinements. Councilmembers Soria, Brandow, and Brand were also in attendance, and, and there were also some additional talks with representatives of the Tower District Neighborhood, who had been present on December 17th and had expressed some reservations about some of the changes being proposed. So consensus was achieved among the administration, the majority of the industry representatives, and the neighborhood representatives regarding some additional changes. The additional changes were roughly along this vein. First, the, the standards in the certainty option were retained and in some cases strengthened. And, and then in accordance with that, the, some neighborhood design guidelines, where they exist for certain neighborhoods, such as Lowell and Tower District in particular, any other neighborhoods that might have those adopted in the future, would be, would be referenced in the development standards, and, and it would be, if you wanted to have that certainty path, then you'd have to follow those two. And then the final part was to streamline the, the process further for projects that did go ahead and do that. So what we have before you today is design standards that reflect that, the streamlining of the process, since it wasn't part of the original, um, material that was asked to be brought back, that has to be brought back separately, so we'll pull that together quickly and be back to you with the improvements to the process very soon. I want to also point out that there was a supplemental that was provided yesterday, which incorporates one last suggestion from a member of the industry committee that we had been meeting with. And then there was also a formatting error that was pointed out to us yesterday, and it's within the mixed-use section, and items C through H should actually be numbered 3 through 8. The way with the misnumbering, Microsoft Word went haywire on us apparently, and moved them back a level in the hierarchy, and that makes it look like they're outside of the certainty option, which is not the intent and wasn't the understanding of anybody involved. Numbering them 3 through 8 brings them back under the certainty option where they belong.
Yeah, I completely understand that.
Yeah, does it make sense? I do have a, an image, if you, if we want to use the overhead, and I can show you how it would, would work out, but we've discussed this with the city attorney's office, they're aware of it, and it's just a numbering problem. So with that, our recommendation is to adopt the environmental finding of Assessment TA 15001A, that text amendment TA 15001A is within the scope of the final master environmental impact report, State Clearing House Number 201211015, certified by the Fresno City Council on December 18th, 2014, and the related addendum adopted by the Fresno City Council on November 19th, 2015, for the citywide development code. And number two, introduce and adopt text amendment application number TA 15001A to adopt pedestrian access and facade design development standards in the residential, multiple-family, and mixed-use zones of the citywide development code, Sections 151004E, 151005, 151104F, and That concludes my presentation.
Okay, now, does that request or recommendation include the amendments that were discussed between you and all the people at-
Yeah, so that would, our recommendation- Yeah, so that would, our recommendation would be to adopt the version that was in the supplemental that you received yesterday, which incorporates all of that.
Okay. And I would, since I made the motion on the amendment, I would ask, Mr. Osimey, is this satisfactory to you and the negotiations that you all engaged in? If you'd like to come up, yes. And Bruce, I have the same question for you.
Yes, Council President, over the last few weeks, we've negotiated or talked to staff with Dan Zack specifically, and we believe all the requests that we had made in the amendments, they've been addressed appropriately.
Very good.
And to our satisfaction, thank you.
So, we're all on the same page from your perspective?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. And City Manager, are we all in agreement on this as well? Very good. I just want to make sure we're rolling the boat in the same direction. Mr. Titelion, Mr. Frazier, you were on the committee, are you in agreement with what was said? If you'd come up and address that, that'd be helpful. I do have your card too, thank you. So, our question is, with that motion and request, in your experience, did that cover everything from both, from every angle that you were familiar with as far as the amendment? Just the amendment?
Mr. President, for the record, my name is Cliff Titelion, and thank you for calling me to the podium. In direct response to your question, I don't think that everything has been addressed and would appreciate the opportunity to explain. However, pursuant to the efforts by staff and their leadership and the consensus building that transpired at those meetings, I am in support of the decision to be made before you today. What I'd like to add, in reference to your question, is the process, as I would assume applies to everybody in this room, is fascinating. We have, under the leadership of staff, not to exclude the mayor, we have a significant effort by everybody involved to improve the code, to encourage a higher level of efficiency in the process, as well as to improve the quality by which our citizens live, and hopefully thereby increase tax base, create jobs, sales tax, and attract new investment from outside the area. And throughout this process, the effort of staff was met with questions and requests and meetings to effectively allow unfettered discretion in design. Ultimately, that's your decision. But my interest in speaking today is to call your attention to something that I recognize as a profound need. My family and myself, I know that I look like I'm about 39 years old, so it's hard to believe that I've been down here working in the redevelopment area since the late 60s. But we have employed approximately half a million square feet in downtown Fresno. We have a situation where because of the late development of Freeway 41 and other conditions, the city migrated north. We have a situation where the cost of development is out of balance with the market rates at which people are willing to come downtown and willing to participate in the redevelopment effort. As members of the council, I would like to urge you to take very seriously and call your attention to the need to improve the level by which we develop, not only our community in general, but specifically downtown. That requires a higher level of articulation in the way that we build buildings and the way that the city controls how these buildings are built. I believe the matter before you today is a good start. To the degree that it does not encompass everything, I want to encourage you to please focus attention to the next go-around with respect to the development code. I want to leave you with this analogy. San Francisco, LA, various parts of LA, once upon a time downtown LA, once upon a time Beverly Hills was ailing in terms of housing and retail. And by organizing and raising the standard of what is to be built, they built a tax base, they don't need to go to the state and the federal government every time there's a need for infrastructure and every time somebody proposes a project because the gap is there and it's upside down. They get the market compatible to the cost, one. Two, by doing such, it's like, I use this analogy in a conversation with somebody. We need to dress up. You're not gonna go to a wedding in blue jeans and a torn tee-shirt. And compared to, and I will give you the drastic example and contrast. Compared to Beverly Hills, we're the fifth-largest economy in California, but we're like the guy showing up with a torn tee-shirt and blue jeans at the wedding. We need to dress up our community so that we can create value in our community. And in support of this matter today, I want to tell you I am in support, conditionally upon your support in return for the next go-around and to look for a higher level of articulation in support of staff in developing such rules so that we can improve our community and make it more economically viable. There's an urgency about this. We have some once-in-a-lifetime opportunities. In attracting the attention of the community at large, Fulton Street is gonna be constructed. And I'm willing to bet that everybody's gonna come look at least once. The High Speed Rail Authority, some are for it, some are against it, some are in support of it, which is irrelevant. However, to this community in central California, we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity because of all the people it'll bring, all the traffic it'll bring, and all the attention it'll bring. We need to perform. And to all those outsiders, we need to look good. And this development code is very, very important. I'm acquainted, I have various relationships with all of you. I know that some are in support of, well, people will build this way or that way and it'll all work itself out. Please take the authority, the responsibility, and the leadership to allow staff to develop and not look for negotiated consensus, but allow them to do what's best for the city. I support your matter today, and I thank you for the opportunity. If there's any questions, I'm happy to come back.
Cliff, I think the year you were born to be 39 was the same year I was born. It's amazing.
That's good.
Thank you. And just to follow up on that, I think the only perfect document that I can recall is the US Constitution. Look what has happened to it. But development code is doing a great first-step effort, and I think we're working in the right direction. With that, Mr. Frazier, would you like to, as a committee member, add your comments?
Okay. First of all, the reason I'm standing up here today is not to offend staff, not to offend council, not to offend any develop-
There you go.
I'm standing up here today, I'm gonna say one time, I'm not here to offend a council, staff, the public, or any developers. I'm only up here protecting my name, okay? The last council meeting we had, I don't feel like I had an equitable amount of time to speak. And I don't feel people have stood up for me. So, today, I'm gonna stand up for myself, okay? My name is Terrence Frazier. I live at 4266 North College. I've been living there for 20 years, which is in the urban core, which is two blocks from Blackstone and Ashland, right down the street from the Walmart. So, I get the shopping carts riding through my neighborhoods every day. And I say that to say, I've been living in this, in the urban core for 47 years. There were comments that were made from another developer, and the comments were the developers that spoke only did two projects in the urban area, and some people need to put their money where their mouth is. So, I've felt that that comment was more geared towards me. So, I'm not here to brag, but since I didn't get a chance to speak and no one stood up, I'm gonna say, in the urban core, in your urban core, I have did over 1,000 to 1,500 projects, real estate projects. During that same time, I changed over 2,000 kids' lives. Some councilmember kids, some mayor, even the mayor's kid. I own over 500,000 square foot of commercial retail. If you don't know what that is, that's five football fields in your city. These properties employ over 2,000 workers. So, I'm considered, in this city and in most cities, a big company. I gotta stay on track here. I've seen the council and staff offer Nordstrom over $12 million in incentives, and they promised 1,000 jobs in 10 years. I watched a single developer get close to $30 million of taxpayers' money. And I feel like sometime I was competing against myself. In all the projects I've done in the city of Fresno, I receive less than or close to $3 million, and I gave it back. So, I believe I put my money where my mouth is. And I believe I deserve a one-on-one meeting when you're talking about the urban core. Because not only did I live there, I worked there, I played there, I changed people's lives there. When all developers were doing suburban area and they was developing all these area, I stayed. I was the one that stayed in your urban core. So, I'm that girlfriend that you're cheating on. So, I say to you, I reluctantly, reluctantly asking council to approve the new amendments. I think it's gonna hurt us, but like I said, there's some things in there that we have some savior. When I leave this, the dais, I just want to say one thing. Lately, I've been seeing a lot of change in the council members. I don't know where it came from. But you gotta remember, your constituents chose you to be transparent to them. You don't own them. They put you in those seats to make the right decisions for them, not for you, not for your political career. So, start making the right decisions. Start, you all ran on transparency, be more transparent. If you're not gonna do it, there will be change. And I don't want to say it, but I will. If you don't change, there will be your first, I will be your first black mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Now, I think that's all the committee members that are here today that I see. And Mayor, would you like to chime in?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I want to acknowledge the diligent work that's been done by our committee. And I want to thank Councilmember Brandau and Baines and Soria for joining me and meeting yet again with our industry group, as was the direction of the council on December 17th. This has been an extremely difficult process, but I believe a very worthwhile one. And so, usually, the biggest fights are because there are hard issues to wrestle with. And so, I know that there are strong feelings and emotions on both sides of this, but I want to take a step back and say that I'm very proud, as mayor, that we're having a great big debate over design standards for buildings in Fresno. That is an awesome thing, that we are moving forward and pressing into an area that we have never pressed into before. And the results sadly are things like the Somerset Apartments and the building that Bruce Rudd toured yesterday with our strike team on problem properties. If we had been dealing with building standards and design standards 30 years ago and 40 years ago, we wouldn't constantly be chasing our tail with not having enough code enforcement officers. So, as heated as I know this has been, I do think it's worth noting that this is a good and healthy thing to have this debate. And there are respectful viewpoints and positions on both sides. But as the previous speaker just said, I think it's important to move this forward today. It's not perfect. Everybody's a little bit mad, and that's usually when we think we found the sweet spot with policy is when everybody's a little bit mad. So, I urge your support for this item today, knowing that there'll still be work to do on text amendments for the citizen review process, as well as a downtown development code that's going to require even more work and attention from all of our relevant stakeholders. So, thank you so much for your attention and your work, and I urge your support today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to the screen and... My colleagues mentioned public comment, but the public comment portion was closed at our last session. And this was just to refine a couple of things within this development code. So, first up is, I thought you were, Lee. No? Okay, oh, I'm sorry, it's Steve Brandau. Got my Bs mixed up.
Thank you, Council President. All right, hey, Dan, I want to ask you a couple of questions. First, I want to say, I mean, probably, we'll go down a long list of line of thank-yous to everybody, and every council member will say thank you. So, I'm just gonna make my thank-yous real quick. Most of them have already been said. I want to thank the industry leaders for putting pressure on council to get things right. I want to thank the community groups for putting pressure on council to get things right. Terrence, I really appreciated your last comment there about being transparent and the fact that we are subject to the citizens, honoring the citizens by putting a lot of energy into this. In this particular case on the development code, it made us really spend a lot of extra time, and a lot of us a lot more time than we really wanted to. And with that, I want to thank the mayor and her staff for taking all of the extra hours just to go out of our way to try and make things right. This is one of those situations where you have multiple different pressure points coming on council, and you, it can really get overwhelming really easy. And the truth is, I didn't want to sit in a lot of extra meetings, but somehow or another, the mayor wrangled me into them. And then, once I was in them, I couldn't get out of them. And, but I really appreciate that we're here today with this recommendation. Dan, you and I have talked a lot through the course of this deal, trying to get things right, hammer out. I appreciate your flexibility in the position you've been put into. After you felt like you had delivered a product, to have that product questioned and have the flexibility in your mind to go back, review, and say, okay, could I even change a few things in the way I'm looking at things? I appreciate that. But I want to, so I want to get some clarification here. You and I talked yesterday, I said, hey, I'm gonna ask these questions real simply and give you a chance to reiterate them. So, what we're talking about here is fast-tracking a system in the city of Fresno that is, in my mind, never been fast-tracked before. There's a lot of reason to fast-track construction in Fresno. Our neighbors to the east of us are one-fifth of our size. They have 100,000 people, we have 500,000 people. They pull more building permits than we pull. They've got a way of moving things through their system relatively quickly. We don't get that luxury because we're so much bigger, you could say cumbersome. We're trying to address that and make our much-bigger city as flexible as we can moving forward. So, we've created a couple of pathways to do that, and it's called by-right construction. It's synonymous with fast-tracking. In order to have fast-tracking, we still want to preserve some of the values that we hold in our standards. So, we have created two options. A flexibility option, which we're gonna talk about a little bit, and a certainty option, which I want to talk about- which I want to talk about right now. In the certainty option, I hope, Dan, I'm gonna come to you in a minute, I'm coming to you, but I want to lay out the groundwork. In the certainty option, there is a series of checkboxes that tells our builders, varied builders in this community, with different ideas on what things look like. If you check off this standard and you check off this box, we're gonna approve you for fast-tracking. Okay? Is that, am I right so far? I'm oversimplifying, but...
It's very simplified, but yeah, that's accurate.
Okay, okay. If you don't want to check off these boxes, if there's something you want to do that doesn't meet our qualifications, minimum standards, then you go into this other category called the flexibility option. Okay? We'll come back to that in a minute. On the certainty option, we've met with our community groups, and a lot of them are here today, and they've got these desires, they want strong standards, especially in the neighborhoods that they represent. So what you've done, and we've, we've asked you to do and you've done, is to take all of their concerns and create those checkboxes. So their standards are imposed upon the bigger standard of the development code. Am I correct there?
Yeah, that was one of the changes that was made after December seventeenth, and those design standards are referred...
So this is one of the changes, this is one of the improvements since the delay on December seventeenth. So, in the, in the Tower District, for example, or the Lowell neighborhood, those design standards that they have for those specific neighborhoods are on top of the standards for the rest of the city. So they're taken, um, they're taken and they're put in into a checkbox. So, so let me just say that if the whole city has ten checkboxes in these neighborhoods, they can add another twenty checkboxes. But they, but a builder has to check off those boxes to get the buy-right or the fast-tracking concept. Okay?
Correct.
All right. And, and, and so, I might call up a couple of those committee leaders in a minute to, just to verify. Okay, so, we want to fast-track construction and building in Fresno. The trade-off is, we have to have minimal standards that we agree upon. You can't go below these standards and fast-track. If you want to cut corners on something, or you have a different idea, you have to come over here into the flexibility option and talk to us about it, and then, then we will have a discussion about that. Still on the certainty option, there is a, it looks like there's a seventy-two hour application review committee. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Um, yeah, I will mention that briefly, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Jennifer Clark, the DARM director, who's been working on that aspect a little bit, um, more closely than I have, and she'll be able to describe it, uh, better than I will. But what I will say is that in your agenda packet, there was a, um, a provisional table that showed how that could work and some of the things that we're working on. Um, and so that's what that refers to, and so that's still in progress. We'll bring that, the specifics of that back to you very soon, and I'll turn it over to Jennifer, that can give you some of the details.
Good morning again. So, we talked extensively in the committee about providing seventy-two hour notification, three days, three business days to these design committees, design review committees, to give them an opportunity to determine whether or not staff has gotten it right. Is it certainty? Did we really check the boxes? So, um, we are working very closely with the city attorney's office, because there, we want to make sure that we're, um, we're addressing all of the Brown Act issues that could potentially arise from this notification process, and whether or not there's an opportunity for those committees to comment. So, we are certainly very supportive of the stakeholders' conversations in terms of notifying the committees about the project, providing the checklist that staff has done to the committees, and providing them with the opportunity to comment on whether or not they agree with staff's categorization of the project as the certainty option. But we're still working with the city attorney's office to determine how that option will work and what that process will be. It was not introduced to the city council on December seventeenth with the rest of the packet, so it will need to be introduced later. So we're still working through that process. At this point in time, those projects under that certainty review would still need to go to the committee, and we've committed that that would occur within their standard thirty-day review period. So, at this point in time, that notification process is not part of what you are being asked to consider today. We're only asking you to consider the design guidelines.
You know, Jennifer, I agree, so, but it's very integral to what we're doing today.
Absolutely.
Okay? Because I've got builders out here, and I can see a couple of them out here, that are very nervous about having a, having, well, for starters, I think in this case, we need to not call it a design review committee, because it's an application review committee. They're reviewing the application that was submitted to make sure the boxes were checked off correctly. Is that right?
Staff is. However, they're, they're, um, the design review committees are actually established by those specific plans, by, um, the Tower specific plan, by, uh, the Fulton Lowell design guidelines. So they are actually called design review committees. So they, but they have standards that they have to review. Does it meet those standards that are set forth in their, in their guiding documents that were approved by the city council? So, um, we are in the process of working with some of those committees to establish those checklists, and that would be part of that process that would come back at a later date.
Okay. And, you know, so, so when we held a committee meeting with, um, when we held, when we met together with, um, industry leaders, at that meeting, and I had councilmember Soria with me and councilman Brand in that meeting, we had a seventy-two hour comment, opportunity for folks to comment. You're telling me now, really, there might be Brown Act problems with...
So what we said was, we would consider that. We, we think it's a, a great opportunity to ensure that we're notifying these design committees of, of projects, and notifying them of, of our determination on the checklist. However, we're still having to work through, how does that, how does that work within our current development code? And how, how we would amend the development code to make that work? Um, and the city attorney can probably address more specifically any, um, specific concerns as it, as it relates to, uh, the Brown Act in particular. However, um, you know, we're, we're working toward that, we're working toward this notification of the committees, notification of, uh, the project, of the, our determination on the certainty option, on the specific checkboxes, and then, um, providing the committees an opportunity to comment on whether or not we got that right.
City Attorney, do you mind chiming in on that?
Yes, first of all, as far as addressing this particular procedural issue, we can't do that today. That will have to come back at a later time.
Right.
But what, and the Brown Act would not allow us to notify committee members, and then they each weigh in on what they think. They have to meet and decide and discuss what they want to think. But what we could do is notify the committee members, and then if the majority says, we want to call a meeting to discuss that issue, we could do it that way. In other words, committee, here's what we're going to do, does anybody want to have a meeting and talk about this? We could provide a process that would do that.
And, City Attorney, I mean, you know, this is all moving under the, um, the concept of fast-tracking. So are there limitations we can put on the timeframe of that meeting?
Yes, we could.
Like?
You could say the meeting must be called within a certain number of days. It would have to be at least seventy-two hours, but you could put a limit.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Mayor, could, could I ask you a question? Because I need your commitment here, Mayor. Right? I mean, we've done a lot of hard work on this deal.
Yeah.
And then, right here at the end, we're finding this little question mark about Brown Act deal. So I know you're committed to this fast-track option. I mean, you've put your staff on this for months. So, now this committee meeting, which is the application review committee, they could get together and take seventy-two hours and say, okay, you know what, this, this project passes, they, they filled out the application correctly. But maybe eventually, eventually, there'd be one that they didn't, they didn't agree with, okay? Then they'd have seventy-two hours to call a meeting. This meeting is gonna make all of these other folks nervous, because they're, in their mind, they don't trust the city of Fresno to do anything quickly. So they think, oh, well then you're gonna have a meeting, and you're gonna have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-fifth of next month, and then, um, that's just gonna delay our project. And, and then that meeting could lead to another meeting. There's a lot of mistrust there. So tell me how, about how you can commit to helping us hap, make this still happen within the mindset that this is fast-tracking.
Right. Well, let me, let me again reiterate the intent of the certainty option with the design standards being met, plus the specific plan, neighborhood design guidelines being met on top of that. So, um, it's the intent of this process, which is subject to us working with the attorneys in Brown Act and understanding how we actually structure it, but it's the intent that staff would verify that all the design standards have been met in the certainty option, as well as in the neighborhood-specific options, uh, lists, that they notify the citizen review committees that the project has come in, that they provide their checklist, that the citizens have the opportunity to verify whether or not the checklists have been completed properly from their point of view. At that point, we have to defer to our attorneys to say, okay, now, now what do we do? How do we collect that input from the committee members and quickly process it in a way that gets packaged to the director? Remember, this is still ultimately a director's decision, uh, that she then would, uh, publish once the decision has been made. That decision is still subject to appeal by either the developer or by, frankly, anybody in the community. So, um, so that's our intent, is to inform people, to let them have the opportunity to verify the checklists have been completed properly, and to provide that input, I'm gonna defer to the legal experts on how that input has to be received, and that, our commitment to all of you is that this is the next phase of this work, is to go back to the table, understand what the law requires, and then, um, develop a recommendation that has to go through the planning commission and ultimately come back to you for debate and adoption. So, you know, that...
But when we have that debate and adoption, you're committed with us today, that you're still operating under the concept of fast-tracking?
Absolutely. And that, the spirit of this, um, this avenue, the certainty option versus the flexibility option, is that if minimum standards are being met, uh, then it ought to be a little bit easier to do that project. Now, um, it's still the case that we have citizen committees that want to be informed of the project and verify the, uh, the staff work, because turns out, they don't trust staff either. Staff get kind of crushed in the middle of this. The developers don't trust them, the residents don't trust them. Uh, but what we're trying to do is put together that very clear checklist, and then it's just a matter of verifying that either the checklist has been met or it hasn't been met, package up those comments and provide them to the director as she makes her decision.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Patience, I would like to call you up, please, real quick. Now, Patience, you have, you have concern, you've expressed concerns, you did on December seventeenth, and you have council members that share your concerns. You and I had several different conversations throughout this process. We, we're, uh, most of your concerns are being addressed, we're moving them into checkboxes. So people, all of the designs that you prefer, say for instance, for the Tower, the citizens' review committee, you guys can put together all of your desires for the Tower District, put them in checkboxes, and then if somebody wants to build in that district, they have to check off your boxes in addition to the regular development, and you're okay, are you okay with that?
That is exactly what we've requested, and I want to thank you, Councilmember Brandau, for your very active participation in getting us just to, uh, a detente, sort of, with the, with our friends in the development community. That was really helpful, you and Councilmember Soria, both were active, and, and we very much appreciated it. So, yes, we, uh, we actually submitted to Mr. Zach our, um, our laypeople's efforts at organizing these checklists, and, um, we're not getting our AICP certification anytime soon, but he does have a list of what we believe is in the design guidelines that is important to us to include. And we did understand, we thank the mayor also, who met with us, and, and Ms. Clark, Director Clark, and Mr. Zach. So we all had an opportunity to kind of hash through this, well, how would this, how would this Brown, I never thought of the Brown Act thing. So, uh, those little things that we hadn't anticipated, that when we really drilled down into logistically, how would this work so that it would be efficient and quick? Because everybody at the table recognized the need for that. And so we, so yes, if, our, our goal is to have the design standards very clear for people who want to bring projects to the Tower District. So, that's very helpful to them, because they know what's expected of them, and then we get to see whether they did it or not. And it's all very like black and white, yes or no? At least that's our theory, so...
And Patience, you had talked with me about, and it's just like the mayor just said, everybody has questions whether staff can pull these things off sometimes. So one of the things that, that we've added was to give a little bit of insurance, was a seventy-two, seventy-two hour application review, right?
Right.
So, but you agree that what that review is about is not talking about, hey, you know what, I don't like that color right there, I want to change colors.
Oh, no.
You're talking about, were the boxes checked appropriately?
So, and, so A, it, it might be the design review committee that does it, but it's an application review process. It's not a design review process. B, you know, you've got thirty boxes or whatever, it's probably more than that, I hate to say, but, you know, however many it is.
Yeah, I get it.
And if, if twenty-nine of them are checked and we agree they're good, then the only thing that's subject to application review is that one issue.
Right.
That, that is, where there's some disagreement. So it's not a complete review of the project, and it's not a review of anything except where there's a dispute about how, you know, whether or not this was actually accomplished, whether the developer actually accomplished this. And it would be based on, look, at the site plan and the elevations.
Okay.
So that's, you know, all the design stuff, that's, we look at that, or people who know more about it than I do look at it.
Thank you, Patience, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, all right, and I, and I'm probably, Council President, are you gonna break for lunch?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely need some lunch.
Okay. Need some lunch after I, okay, so I've just got one, one last thing to say then. Um, so, um, Terrence challenges to be transparent, and so, here is really some transparency. There's a lot of competing pressures on council. Uh, I, in my opinion, everybody's motive is relatively the same. Everybody wants council to do the right thing for the city of Fresno. Then you get some interpretations of what that means. But, um, I appreciate everybody's motivations being that they want Fresno...
Amanda, excuse me, sir, Amanda? We're gonna hear you, you in about three minutes.
Okay.
If you'll please stay. Tamara, I'm sorry, you're right. Probably feed the meter, huh? Okay, fine, we'll wait for you. You've been here all day, and I have to respect that. I apologize, Councilmember Brandau.
Okay, and I'm trying to wrap it up in sixty seconds. So Dan took some additional meetings under the direction of the mayor. They made some, they were flexible when they looked at some diff, last-minute options. They made some changes since December seventeenth. Some of those changes didn't set well with, um, one of our, um, local developers who spoke here earlier that we love. So we're gonna carve out a section that he's devoted his life and resources to, and, and, carve out a little section for him on the south end of the mall, so that he doesn't have to be in one-hundred percent agreement with your final conclusions. And so, I'm, in, in an effort to be fair to all the voices that were heard, I'm gonna make a motion to agree with staff recommendations today, including the changes from Mr. Fraser. So, and his, um, carve out.
So a motion by Member Brandau, second by Member Brand. And is that the extent of your comments?
Yeah.
Thank you. What we're gonna do now, uh, we're gonna have unscheduled communication. I apologize for calling you Amanda, Tamara, my, my, my bad. Would you like to come forward? This is unscheduled communications, if you wish to speak on a matter concerning city business that is not on the agenda, you have the opportunity to do so under, under, uh, unscheduled communication. Before you start, uh, we will continue this matter till three-thirty, and three-thirty because the, uh, we have ceremonial presentations that have been scheduled honoring the people in our, uh, city that have done exceptional work, so I need to accommodate that. So, three-thirty, uh, we'll start with, uh, this process, and then hopefully we can conclude it today. Plus our other business that's on the agenda, so thank you all very much. Please state your name and, uh, address, and, uh, we'd love to hear from you.
Hi, I'm Tamara Algots. I live at twenty-three, twenty-seven West Shields. And I'm here to talk about, um, some statistics that you probably, most of you already know.
I might want to get a little closer to the microphone. I might want to get a little closer to the microphone so we can hear you loud and clear.
Let me just get into it. One in five women and one in 75 men will be raped at some point in their life. 91% of the victims of rape and sexual assault are female. Girls ages 16 to 19, high school age, are four times more likely to become victims than the general population. What I really want to bring to a point is that victims of sexual assault are three times more likely to suffer from depression, 13 times more likely to abuse alcohol, 26 times more likely to abuse drugs, four times more likely to contemplate suicide. 81% of women and 35% of men report significant short-term or long-term impacts such as PTSD. Rape leads to the spread of STDs, and even results in unwanted pregnancy for some of us. Now, let me ask you, with these mental challenges that women experience after being raped, why is it that 68% of rapes still go unreported? Why is it that the conviction rate is as low as 2% when annually rape costs the US more than any other crime, followed by assault, murder, and drunk driving? Each rape costs approximately over $150,000. And healthcare for women who were abused, sexually abused as children is 16% higher. Why is that fair? I'd like to wrap this up with something I mentioned earlier about the effects of rape. Some were depression, anxiety, PTSD, STDs. But let's focus on the women who were impregnated by their rapists. Pregnancies resulting from rape. In 2012, over 300,000 women were raped. According to medical reports, the incidence of pregnancy for one time unprotected sexual intercourse is 5%. By applying this pregnancy rate to the female survivors, there are possible 17,000 babies born as they assaulted, as a result of rape in 2012. And guess what? In some states, in this country, the awful men who impregnated these innocent women against their will will have their paternal rights protected. And in this state, it takes a conviction to even terminate some of their rights. And if you get that conviction and you terminate their rights, they do not have to pay you child support. Please tell me how this is fair. Please tell me how our government spends more money on sexual assault and rape, yet has the conviction rate of 2%. Tell me why 68% of rapes go unreported. Tell me why, when a friend of mine was walking down the street in Tower District and told a police officer that a man was harassing her, he said, "Maybe you shouldn't be wearing that." I think we need to rally for better training for our police officers. My-
You can, you can finish.
Better training for our police officers, better laws in place to protect women who are assaulted and women who become pregnant from their assaults. In Alabama, actually, convicted rapists keep all of their rights to the child. They conceive, that was conceived via rape, forcing women to co-parent with their rapists. And if you think about it from a Californian standpoint, only 2% of our rapists are convicted. That leaves 98% of us having to deal with our rapists still on the street. And if you think about the 5% chance that some of us might have gotten pregnant, you have to factor into the fact that now we have to deal with co-parenting with our rapists.
Thank you very much. On some of that information, I think if you chatted with the law enforcement, Sheriff Memes and Police Chief Dyer, and then the prosecutorial aspect of that would be our DA, Lisa Smith Camp. And they may have statistics or information that could answer some of those questions for you, but I think that would be the best place to start with the information that could provide that to you.
What I'm asking is if the city could put more effort into funding programs for victims and their children. Because obviously, the law is not protecting us.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you again, and thanks for waiting all day. Appreciate that. Thank you. We'll recess for lunch, and hopefully we'll all be back here about 1:20, 1:25.
[laughing]
[inaudible]
Right. You know, hindsight, you know, was the stadium a bad idea?
I don't know. Certainly the size and the cost of that stadium.
You could build a smaller stadium.
Yeah.
$25 million. And actually planned around it.
Right.
And they could still do that. They never, they thought you put it there, it's going to develop like something. It doesn't.
But if you did a $25 million stadium, the stadium debt would have been half of that. It would have made the team buy it.
Exactly.
Nobody went into the-
Yeah.
I'm getting the chat.
No, I said that, I said they should have been, they had options. They could have built without 8,000, added the boxes later.
Thank you.
The $1 million stage was a waste of time, a waste of money. Could have been Value Engineer-
Right.
For probably 1.5-
I didn't know that.
What's going on?
I reread Dan Barrett's-
Remember, remember.
That's why we've got ice floor and a bunch of hockey equipment.
[inaudible]
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go back on the record and take up some unfinished business. More specifically, 2D resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the State of California for Parks Program. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the City Council. I'm Manuel Molineto, the Director of the Parks Department here in Fresno. I'm here before you today recommending that you adopt resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development, and acceptance of the 2015 Housing Related Parks Program grant funds in the amount of up to $1.2 million. The department has submitted grant requests for Chandler Park, Frank H. Ball, Highway City Community Science Center, Mariela Brown Community Center, and Mosketa Community Center. The grants have been submitted to the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development. The criteria that they're going to use in awarding the money is, are the facilities located in park-deficient areas? How many low and moderate-income residents live in the area? And the proximity or distance of the projects from the low-income or infill housing projects. The aforementioned park submissions give this department the best opportunity for maximum bonuses and grant funding. That concludes my presentation. If I'm here to answer any questions.
Thanks very much. Councilmember Brandau.
Was that my microphone? All right. Thank you, Manuel. And I have a motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion by Member Brandau, second by Member Olivier.
In your district, too.
I see no further conversation or anybody ready to speak further. So we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. We'll go out to the public first. Anyone from our community wish to come forward and address this issue? Please do so. Give us your name and address. Seeing none, we will come back up here. And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? You have a 7-0 vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is item 2E, as in Edward, approved consulting services agreement with Console for the Central Valley Energy Tune-Up Program. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the council, Jennifer Clark, Director of Development and Resource Management. A few weeks ago, you approved an agreement with PG&E to provide these services locally. Staff has conducted a request for professional services, had extensive review and evaluation of those proposals, and is prepared to make a recommendation for a consulting contract for Consul to provide the energy assessments. If you have any specific questions, we are here to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take this out to the public. Is there any citizen that's here today that would like to come forward and address this issue? Seeing none. I thought we had an SPCA moment. We'll bring it up to the dais for a vote. Oliver Baines.
Motion approved, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Baines, second by Councilmember Olivier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. Moving right along to 2F, as in Frank, actions pertaining to joint use of school district green space. City Manager's Office.
Yes, thank you, Council President. This item before you is the first of a two-phase effort to increase the amount of green space that's available to our community. It is an amendment to an existing joint use agreement with Fresno Unified, and then a new joint use agreement with Central Unified. This, these joint use agreements will complement the efforts underway to identify a, an organization who will provide weekend recreational nutrition and other very structured programming at these green spaces. The proposals are in. It is my goal to have a recommended vendor in front of council maybe by the 24th. So the ability to get this joint use agreement approved today and then move it on to support or adoption by Fresno Unified and Central Unified is vital in order for us to deliver to the community services, hopefully by sometime end of March 1st of April.
Very good. Thank you very much. I'll take this out to the public. Anyone present wish to come forward and speak on this item? If so, please give us your name and address. Seeing George come in, I don't think he wants to comment on this. And you're more than welcome to, sir. Bring it back up here. We have a motion. And a second?
Councilman Brandau, Councilman Capriola, you'll notice that computer right next to your left hand there?
Yes, I see that. Councilmember Brandau. I thought you used up all your time this morning. And we were going to be a little bit more-
Thank you. Well, Council President, as a huge proponent of green space and this joint use agreement with the schools, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Motion by Member Brandau, and second by Member Quintero. Is, Councilmember Soria, sorry.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to make a few comments in regards to these agreements. Excited about the city of Fresno entering into joint use agreements with both school districts. I know that initially it was, we were looking at only Fresno Unified, but I'm excited to see that Central Unified has been included. And so, strong supporter of increasing park space and being creative. I think this is a great way that the city can partner up with our schools to ensure that more of our communities have accessibility to open space. One thing that I would recommend as we move forward with, I don't know when the RFP process for the outside vendor, is that what I'm understanding, there's going to be a third party that would be providing some of the programming? One of the things that I would like to actually see is that maybe some of the funds from the 1.2 are dedicated so that our Parks Department also maybe part of that. Because I know that we, it seems like we're going to, the goal is to contract out. And so I would like to see really the, also the Parks Department kind of be part of that, and see if they can maybe have one or two schools that they run, if that's a possibility. And so maybe we can talk about if that's something that we can discuss and include. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Quintero?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank the City Manager's Office for working tirelessly on trying to get this green space agreement with, with the Fresno Unified School District and Central Unified. But I wanted to also acknowledge the work of the, the School Board trustee for Fresno Unified, who's our Chief of Staff, Luis Chavez, for, he's the one that brought this forward at the Fresno Unified end of it, and it's come to a great solution. So thank you both very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Member Quintero. Screen is clear. We have a motion by Member Brandau, second by Member Quintero. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? It passes 7-0. Thank you very much. I think that takes us up into our morning item that was set over till 3:30. Unless I'm missing something? Okay, good. With that in mind, we've handled unscheduled communication, so we will recess until 3:30, and we will resume the development code item. Thank you all very much. Okay, folks, it is 3:32. And we have a quorum, and we will continue with our 10:15 item that we set over, just that item to 3:30 today, and it's the magic hour. So those that had punched up before lunch, please do so. I remember three or four on the screen. I see none now, so I guess we can vote on this. No? I think, as I recall, Members Quintero, Soria, and Baines. I knew it was a B. I didn't know if it was Brand, Baines, or Brandau. Okay, thank you.
I took my two minutes.
After about a year, you watch, my friend.
Okay, so it's back?
Okay, so we're back on the record again, and Councilmember Baines, it is your opportunity to address this issue.
No. No, you don't need to, you don't need to recap. And I'll be brief. Councilmember Brandau, in his remarks earlier, covered some areas, and I'm appreciative of that, that are of import to me. So as a result, I'll just kind of focus my remarks around kind of some specific areas. And one, I certainly want to echo the comments that he made to staff about all the hard work that you all have done on this to get us to this point. Also want to echo that same sentiment to our working subcommittee, Councilmember Soria, Brandau, and Brand, that really, I think, helped move this issue to this point. I want to thank interested parties like Patience Milrod there that have, again, I think, offered a lot of input to make sure that we stay honest on certain issues that are, that matter a lot. And I want to, of course, thank the mayor for marshaling this effort and getting us to this point. Although we're not done. So we're reaching another milestone, and I can be supportive of what I read here today. I think the things that I needed to see included were included, which I can go along with. And it's not a perfect document, but I think we all can acknowledge that. What I do want to, you know, make mention of now more than anything is really the next phase is there's a couple of things that are really important to me, and they really do revolve around ensuring that our, our community groups, especially ones that have specific plans, like our design review committees in the tower and Fulton Lowell specifically, still have input on the process. So Councilmember Brandau brought up Dan, I think Jennifer, and Patience, and everyone spoke to that. But I just want to make clear that it's going to be very important to me, that as we come back with our text amendment, really filling in the blanks in the process, that those committees are giving the relevant standing that they've always had. That is going to be something I'm going to read very carefully to see. I made a point to make sure that people understand that as we do this, as we are elevating our standards, and as we're getting where we need to go as a community, I am not going to be okay with doing that at the expense of our resident groups, trying to preserve the character of our communities. So that is going to be of major importance to me down the road. I know we'll start that work- I know we'll start that work in the next few days, but I will be probably following that maybe even closer than I followed this particular process here. But I want to make sure that staff understands and my colleagues understand that making sure that our residents are involved and have the ability to preserve the character of their neighborhoods is going to be a very, very high priority for me going forward. So, I believe there's a motion and a second, Council President, so I've already said I can be supportive, and those will wrap up my comments.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Brand.
Thanks, Council President. I want to first start by thanking everyone that was in the process, really going back to like last summer. I think especially the mayor who went out of her way to be fair, to, I realize this is the multifamily, but to get the input from all the industry people, the developers, Patience Millrod, and all the citizen groups. And as we came across this final barrier, the one on multifamily, we had the experts and we had a balanced crowd in there. And hopefully, nobody's ever going to be totally satisfied with the final result, but I think it was a fair process getting here. And really, trying to balance, you know, the rights of the developer and the citizen groups is not easy. And this city has been known for its non-business friendly, takes forever, CUP, delay, delay, delay. And I think we've made a lot of progress towards getting to the by right development. And in fact, the way Jennifer designed it, where, you know, if you've come in with the existing zoning, no changes, it's by right, you move fast. If there's something that is beyond that and rezoned, then it's going to trigger the CUP and the review process, and that's the way it should be. On these, this final process, you know, on the certainty process, the flexibility, I, you know, I was part of the subcommittee that put the final pieces together, and there are things I didn't like in the end, but I'm willing to go along with everybody else in the interest of fairness. I know there's some people that want to make a few comments. I want to ask Terrence Frazier. Is there anything you want to add to this process? You were involved pretty much from the inception.
Well, I thought, I thought the process was fair. I mean, the developers spoke and the staff spoke, council spoke, and I think we came up with something that everybody agreed was fair, and I think it was fair.
Okay, you think the final product is a fair product and not exactly what you wanted, but enough of it's there for everybody?
I think it was, I think it was, absolutely it was fair. I think there was something that needs to be clear. I heard Councilmember Baines say something about the actual process during the certainty option. I think there's some wordings in there I think I need a little clarity on. And I think when they're talking about, when they go to the design review and the certainty option, I think at that time, we should just be just checking dots and making sure staff did what they did. I don't think it should, they have the three-day notice in the certainty option for them to, for design review to make sure that staff did their job. And then after that, I think it should be over. So, that way it speeds the process up and don't slow anything down.
So, you think it's clear enough, you think there's ambiguity in the?
I can hear you.
Do you think it's clear enough, the way it's written right now?
It's not clear.
Okay.
I think we should clear it up right now to just make sure that, if you read it, it says that after three days, then they have a committee discussion. And I think it should be after three days, it's pretty much over in the certainty option, but not the flexibility option, but in the certainty option. I mean, because if it's certain, it should be by right.
Okay, so, on the certainty option, you just want clarification that after the three-day, the 72-hour period expires, it then moves on, the process is done?
Process is done.
So, how would you word that?
After, after three, after you have your three days for design review and staff, so staff looks at it, design review committee comes back and look at it, and design review say, yes, they did follow A, B, and C, and D, boom, they get their permits and they get to start building.
So, if we tweaked it and said, something to the effect, after 72 hours, unless something comes up, the process is considered deemed approved then?
Yes, deemed approved up under the certainty option, not flexibility option.
Only on the certainty option?
Only on certainty option. Because everybody already had their say during the certainty option, so it shouldn't be anymore. Let's go and let's have more meetings after that.
Okay. City Attorney? If, the way this is worded now on the certainty option, after the 72-hour option for any committee or citizen to come in and object to it, can the words be simply changed that after that point in time, it's deemed approved? Is that appropriate?
Well, we were discussing several options for that, and we can't do this today, but if we're looking at language to bring back, it could be something along the line of, it would be, these things would be submitted to the committee members. If within 72 hours or whatever the time period, a majority do not indicate that they're objecting and want to hold a meeting, then it will be deemed approved.
Okay.
And then if they do object, if the meeting's not held with a quorum indicating they do not approve it within a certain number of days after that, then it will be deemed approved.
Okay, so what would be the appropriate timing on that?
I don't think that's the right wording.
Go ahead.
Because I don't, I think they shouldn't be rejecting the project. If they're rejecting, they're saying that they didn't do A, B, and C. But if the developer already did A, B, and C up under the certainty option, the only thing the group is coming in and doing is checking to make sure staff did their job. That's it, not the project. The project already been passed through the certainty option. And the way he, the way he said it is, they still get to go back and say, well, I don't like the project.
Okay, but it's something, oh, there's a, well, here's, I want to get, I want to, we've spent so much time with this thing.
Yeah, that's why I said, that's, you don't know as a developer, it's not clear for us.
Yeah, is, from my own point of view, from being there on the other side of the table as a developer myself, is when you go into these items, sometimes they're huge items, there's a lot of money involved, and it's based on somebody's interpretation of a few words, you know, the meaning of is, is, right? Remember that one?
Right.
And so, you're just wanting, and I'm trying to?
I just want clarity. I want clarity. I'm not saying what you should be doing or not doing. I want clarity so I know what I'm, what I'm going to, because in that meeting, they specifically said, if you already did X, Y, and Z on the certainty option, everybody else, then you're fine. If you're going to go in the Tower District, they still have their own thing that you have to pass, but everything else should be fine.
Okay, thanks, Terrence. I'm going to call up Jennifer, thank you. You heard the conversation, can you respond to that?
Absolutely. And we would like to take into consideration all of the comments today on the process that we're talking about, especially as it relates to changing the way the process works in the development code right now. Again, as the city attorney indicated, today we're talking about the standards, what do you want the outside of the building to look like at the end of the day? And then, based on the direction that we received today, we will initiate a text amendment that would then amend the process to allow for this notification and review by the district committees. As it stands right now, what will happen is if an application came in 30 days from today, because this won't be effective for another 30 days, if an application came in, it would be routed to those district committees until we change the process. So, right now, the process as it stands will be exactly the way it is currently in the code until the process is changed per your input today. So, I appreciate all the input. I think Terrence has some really good points that it's not very clear, and the reason it's not very clear is it hasn't been written yet. So, we've had some ideas, we discussed it with the stakeholder group extensively, we all agreed in theory, this is a great way to do it. Let's figure out legally how to make it happen.
Because literally, thousands of dollars, or millions, millions of dollars in certainty are at stake based on sometimes simple interpretations. So, if I said, can we come back in 90 days and, for the clarification, is that a reasonable time?
Yes. We can have the process back to you in less than 90 days. My goal is significantly shorter than that, but we'll need at least 45 to go through the amendment of the, doing a text amendment to the development code, but we would like to come back to you with that amended process based on the input that we're receiving today.
Okay, that's, City Attorney? Do I need to make any kind of, is it, we say, ask the request that the planning department come back within 90 days for, basically, putting all this thousands of hours of work together into a final product?
Yes, you could add that to the motion.
Is that okay with the motion maker? Just to come back in 90 days and just to answer these final clarifications on?
Process.
Process, yeah.
You know, I'd like to investigate, I mean, I'm open to it for sure, but I'll investigate it with a couple of people in the room, that it's their business.
Okay, well, I'll just leave it there, and we can, at the other council members weigh in. Anybody else want to chime in here on, that's just a recommendation?
I think what we're doing, the process is not being approved today.
Is that correct, Ms. Clerk? So, we're just fine tuning, and there's going to come a time for the actual approval process.
So, the concept of changing the process came up in the stakeholder meetings, and I think it's a very valid concept and a concern about how do you ensure that the process will go smoothly for those that check the boxes, that meet all of the criteria, as we were talking about this morning. It was not part of the direction on November 17th to go back and evaluate these specific sections of the code. We were really focusing on the design itself, not on the process. But as a result of those meetings, the direction is, gee, we'd really like to change the process, so that has to be initiated through a different, through a new text amendment, and that's absolutely something we'll start tomorrow if that's the desire of the council.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, this is to my colleagues, thank you.
Thank you. Member Quintero?
Thank you, Mr. President. Neither Jennifer or Dan will do, I got some questions. Want to back up a little bit and ask, you know, in terms of how we got to where we are today, when you initially started having the development code meetings, my understanding is, of course, there was a subcommittee of council members and developers that met to discuss. How many developers was there? Approximately, approximately.
The full list was in the packet, I believe, and I think it was about a dozen or a dozen and a half.
Okay.
Twelve, eighteen, somewhere there.
Twelve to sixteen, eighteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, twelve to eighteen. Mm-hmm. Was there any of the district committees from any, any parts of the city included in those meetings?
No, no. The direction, as we understood it from Councilmember Brand on November 18th, was to go over the standards with the building industry and work them out, so that's how we approached it.
Well, Mr. Tatalian made reference today to the next development code meetings. Do you think it would be worthwhile to include district committees, one or two members from those district committees at these meetings that you'll be having?
Yeah, well, it's something we could look at, you know, if that's, I don't think I'm in a position to make that decision per se, but I think that's something we could, we could look at moving forward.
Well, I think it'd be worthwhile. I know we have our Roosevelt-specific plan committee, and they get quite a few projects that they look at as, as part of the process before it goes to planning commission, and so they make some pretty big decisions, I believe.
Oh, you're talking about the specific plans?
Specific plan committees, well, but being a part of these development code meetings as well, because they can raise some, I think, some significant concerns as growth goes on. But, and then you also have your existing neighborhoods and commercial areas that might be affected if a developer comes in and wants to develop a, an unused piece of property or build something new. I think, you know, I mean, there's got to be some input, and a good example is the folks from the Tower District, you know. The, okay, so, so, once this, this group that you've met with, you know, development companies and, and the planning department, there was kind of a consensus at the end of, yeah, this is good?
Yeah, yeah, not unanimous agreement, you know, but yeah, there was consensus that we had adjusted it in the way that we needed, that this flexible versus certain breakdown and the urban versus suburban breakdown and some of the other modifications that we made.
Okay, but everybody pretty much left the room saying, yeah, this is the, this is the best that we have, you know, at this point, and we can all live with it, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, we felt like we had consensus, especially after the meeting in July or January 13th, which was the last one.
Who's with the planning department or the folks you met with?
No, the stakeholders there, the development folks.
Okay, so, pretty much everybody was happy then. Then we get to this point, and then there was some changes that we were advised would make it better?
Are you talking about the changes in the supplemental?
Yes.
Yeah, so there were some, right toward the end, there were some additional changes requested, and we felt like, like they were worthwhile, and so we put them in.
Let's say if, my understanding, of course, has been that, you know, a development company wants to develop something and there's, it isn't, they can't get exactly where they want to get to because of the codes, they can easily file an amendment, right?
Yeah, there'd be various options. There might be a rezoning, you know, might suit them if there's another zone in the ordinance that covers what they want to do, they could look at that route. If not, they could always look at a text amendment, so maybe the use they want to do or some other design standard.
And that covers the development code, right?
Yeah, and so you could propose a text amendment. Yeah, there are various options.
So, if we have, you know, amendments that can be done and everything, why are we, why are we still here talking about all this?
Yeah, well.
Well, don't smile, give me an answer.
Yeah. Well, yeah, you know, we think that these design standards for the areas affected by them, which would be the mixed-use zones and the multifamily zones and temporarily downtown until the downtown code is ready, you know, we think this gives a good blend of certainty and flexibility, and projects will have, you know, if they want a quick approval, they can just follow those certainty standards, get approval. If they want to do something more creative, they can take that flexibility route that we carved out. And then for something that's bigger and even more different than what's imagined by either one of those two paths, something like a text amendment or a rezone is always something that can be proposed.
Because, I guess what I'm getting to is that, okay, so we go to the next part of the development code, and I want to thank the council committee that participated in that and planning and the development community for, yeah, I mean, that's a lot of time and effort, but it would seem that, that, you know, once you've been able to sit down in one room with all these folks, that you reach a consensus, and isn't there some kind of rule we could make that say, okay, everybody accepts it, that's the recommendation we're going to make, and no more changes?
You can make that point.
Because then you could file an amendment, right?
What's that?
Then a person who's developing something could file an amendment.
Right, and anything can always be changed by coming to this body here and getting an amendment through.
But it would take council majority to say, okay, that's the end of the story.
To change the code, yes.
No, but I mean, when you, that would say, as you go into this next meeting for the development code, you know, so that we're not here like we are today at the next round where we're discussing changes that, on things that, that a consensus had been reached on, it would just seem a lot, you know, more simple to me.
Yeah, I mean, if the council approves the design standards that are proposed today, then we wouldn't reconvene a meeting on this subject with any of the stakeholders. However, there is a downtown development code, permanent downtown development code that's in the works, and that will have its own process over the coming months.
Sure, no, that's understandable.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's, that's the option that any developer has, is to file an amendment. It's been done for years, we approved, you can approve a new, a new general plan or a new plan, and the next day, somebody that's developing some, well, can, I need to file an amendment?
That's always a possibility, absolutely. We feel like this?
Well, that's an option that a businessperson has, you know, a developer.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, why are we here today?
Well, because we don't want to make the bulk of projects go through that process. That's a pretty arduous process. That's a pretty arduous process. And so we feel like, you know, what's being proposed today, you know, gives neighborhoods protection, that the quality is going to be there, and yet meets the needs of the market, so that a good project can come through and not have to come before you. They can...
Yeah, but the exercise we're going through today is still kind of cumbersome, you know, trying to sort this out and like we're tap dancing or something. I mean, just...
Yeah, and we wouldn't want to put every project through that. So that's why we're trying to do it all in advance.
I don't know, Dan.
Through the code.
I don't know. It was, things were more simple, I guess, like the discussion on the dairy this morning. I remember seeing Jeff Roberts and Gary Giannetta, some of those guys dragging the main in front of that place. Corey George was right across the street. Yeah. So Nick Yovino even approved that building, I think. But those were good days. But seriously, Council, I'd really like, the committee maybe, and I don't know if the city manager has any input into that, that, you know, once a consensus is reached, the final recommendation comes in. And, I mean, we spend a lot of time on just trying to tweak maybe two or three items. And, you know, amendments, yeah, they're a cumbersome process, but that's, it's, I mean, don't they do that in Clovis as well, amendments?
Yeah, every city amends its code from time to time, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, well, it's just something I wanted to think about, you know, considering, because if we don't come up with something a little bit more solid, we're going to be sitting here at the next round and going through that. So, but that, I guess, would take council to make that happen. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Were you saying WWCD is part of the amendment process? What would Clovis do?
I was, what have they done?
Really? Thank you, sir. Ms. Sorio, you're up. Councilmember Sorio.
Thank you, Council President. So, just a couple of thank yous. I do want to thank the administration for, and the staff for including me in this last go-around in terms of the committee with the experts and my other council colleagues. I appreciate that. I also, I know I don't see Cliff here, but I did appreciate the comments that he made about where we're at in terms of the city of Fresno, really wanting to be a city where we do need to dress up. And having higher standards is really important. And I believe that, at least this development code, makes that attempt to create higher standards so that not only the developers that are here in our community, but when we're having outside developers coming and investing in our community, that they actually meet those higher standards and they're building beautiful buildings and not just trying to make money off of us and then leave and leave us with crappy buildings. So I do appreciate that supporter of being able to increase our standards, because if we look at what the development code has done, and now, in terms of the by right process, now a lot of our communities actually don't get notification. And you all know and have heard me before, that was an issue that is very important for me, because I do believe that transparency is important. I believe that the public process is important. But I understand that we also need to make sure that the city of Fresno has a process that works for our developers and for our business owners that do want to do business here, so that they're not discouraged, but that they do want to invest. So I get that as well. I will say that I will support this reluctantly, because there's still a couple of things that have to happen for me to feel very comfortable. There's still, in terms of the design guidelines for the Tower, the Tower District design guidelines that are there, I still haven't seen the list and the requirements that the developers have to meet, right, in terms of their project. So without seeing them, it is challenging to say I'm going to support something without having it right in front of me. But I will trust and I will be very involved in the process to make sure that those design guidelines are translated as to, as a great checklist for the certainty option. In terms of the process for the seventy-two hour notice, I will make it very clear, just for public record, that I was very hesitant to eliminate public review, because I do believe in public review and the importance of it and what it means, especially for the Tower District. And so I was probably the only one in terms of, and there were some people that wanted to eliminate it completely. I won't name names, but I know that there was people in the room that did, and I wasn't comfortable with that. And I spoke up, and I will speak up again, and I will say that I wasn't. Does a seventy-two hour period give me a little bit more comfort? It does give me a little bit more comfort. I've spoken to my constituents and spoken to folks that sit in the review committee to see how they felt about it. So it does provide a little bit more, it's more of a compromise. So I know I didn't get everything that I would have liked to have seen, but I will go with it, and we'll see how it ends up turning out. As our council colleagues, El Quintero mentioned, things can always change. So if things aren't working, better believe that I will come back and bring something so that it works for my neighborhood and the constituents that I represent. But I do want to just let you guys know that I will reluctantly support this, just because I haven't seen exactly what those standards are going to be translated to in terms of the Tower District Design Guidelines. I do want to make sure that I am included from the very beginning. I want to be part of those meetings, and I want to make sure our, the residents that are part of those committees are actually included as well as we move forward in adopting those, whenever it is. I don't know if it's in that ninety-day period, which I hope that that's what it is, because, as mentioned, if we don't adopt them quicker, the process will still be a little bit longer for our developers. So that's, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brandell.
Can I ask you a couple of questions? All right. Terrence, you and I...
Getting pretty popular today.
We're a little bit afraid of the same thing. This thing, this thought about another meeting, like, could be a big setback in our minds. So the seventy-two hour, right now, the way it's written, seventy-two hours, the application review committee has seventy-two hours to say, to request a meeting.
No.
I'm sorry. I have to jump in again.
Oh, please.
So, the only thing that you are voting on today are the standards, not the seventy-two hour...
It's super connected, though, Jennifer. It's super connected, because we can create the great standards, but if these folks don't trust the process, both sides of the argument in here, then we'll unravel this thing.
Absolutely. I just want to make it clear that, so what you're voting on does not include that.
No, I got it.
Okay.
But I'm, so I'm talking about, I'm trying to nip a problem in the bud eight weeks from now, when this comes back.
Right.
We have to almost know what that outcome, we have to be as close to possible what that outcome would be, right?
Okay.
So, so while you're up here...
So the city attorney has actually come up with some good suggestions in terms of how we make that process work. And I think he talked through a few of those a little bit earlier.
Okay.
But we do want to make it very clear for Mr. Fraser and for all of the developers who come to the city, what is that process, so that they know that upfront. Is it three business days? Is it three business days, and then they know if they have to go to a committee? Is it, you know, what is that process? And I think that's really important, that we clarify that in the process.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because the meeting that Terrence and I were in, what we were talking about, there was three business days to make a comment, right? Now it's three business days to make, to request a meeting. And then, could you request a meeting? I want to request a meeting three weeks from now. And then, then all, then nobody can stand that response. So I've got to try and find a way of, because if this is going to be fast-tracked, if we're really going to try to fast-track some projects, then we've got to, we've got to move forward with the fact that that meeting can't be three weeks, a month, six weeks from now. And that's what most of the people in this room would probably expect to happen, because that's our track record.
It wasn't supposed to be a meeting.
What's that?
When we was in the meeting, that meeting, of course, a meeting to another meeting, but when we was in that meeting, it was not, if it went through certainty option, the only, and I remember Councilmember Sorio was very adamant that her people need to be a part of this. And, but, everybody came up to an agreement that, okay, she's right, you got three days to make sure that staff pretty much did their job.
Yes.
On the certainty option. So, three days, not, no meetings after that.
But check it out.
Okay.
I agree, because I was the one that designed that seventy-two hour thing, if you remember, the application review, okay? So I agree, but unfortunately, the city attorney says that meeting has to be a Brown Act meeting.
Right.
Okay? So, a Brown Act meeting means that that group has to meet publicly, okay? So if they want to request that meeting, that's what's really screwing us today, by the way, is that Brown Act, getting that Brown Act part of this solution. So, so, hold on, Terrence. So Doug, seventy-two, they'll have seventy-two hours to review the application and request the meeting. Now, what kind of parameters can we put upon that meeting that they, and who is the meeting, who will be at that meeting? For those of you that are trying to get your head around it, what meeting is this?
I assume it would be a majority. You would need at least a majority of the committee members at that meeting.
Okay. And, and that meeting would be with our planning director, or no?
That's up to her, but...
Jennifer, how do you perceive this meeting? And I know, we're talking about the process now, but what is that meeting?
So, it's essentially what we have been discussing as a potential process, is within the three business days, the seventy-two hours, a majority of the, of the design review committee would say, nope, you got it wrong, staff. Now, there are two choices with that. One is to send the developer down the flexibility path, which requires a meeting of the review committee. Or, they can say, but we think it's pretty simple, and we'd like to call a meeting of the review committee. And that is just the design review committee with associated staff. It doesn't necessarily have to be me there, but the developer would be there presenting their project. Maybe it was a misunderstanding. Oh, I didn't know you were doing X, Y, and Z. I didn't see it on the plans, or you didn't put it on the plans, and it could be pretty simple. Or it could be, we believe this is flexibility, you need our input, it does not meet our standards, staff was wrong on the checklist, it does not meet our standards, therefore, we must review it and provide a recommendation.
I need to clarify that a little bit. The majority of the members cannot substantively weigh in one way or the other outside of a meeting. So all they can say is either call a meeting or don't call a meeting.
There, so...
And the meeting is within their own membership, though?
Right. It would be their normal development, design review committee meeting. So, the Tower District now is meeting regularly. Fulton Lowell Committee meets regularly. And part of their requirements would be, they have to keep that schedule, and they have to be there so that we don't impede development process from slowing down.
Okay. And then, and then, what do, what, when they meet, what they, their conclusion at that meeting just comes straight back to you as the planning director and say, here's what our conclusion is on this application, right?
Correct. It would be part of their, part of the recommendation, so, yes.
Yeah. We recommend, it's still just a review of the application, so we recommend that you take a look at this box. We don't think it was checked appropriately, right? Something like that?
Right.
They're just reviewing the application.
They still are a recommending body to the review authority, which in this particular case would be me.
And then you could say, hey, we checked it, we did check it correctly, or you're right, thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Correct.
Okay. Doug, they have seventy-two hours. Is it, is it, could we request that they would have seventy-two hours to set a meeting not to exceed...
The minimum timeframe to give notice of the meeting is seventy-two hours also.
That's...
So if they get seventy-two hours to review and decide whether or not to call a meeting, the earliest you could actually have a meeting would be seventy-two hours after that.
Got it.
So you could set a maximum also of eight business days or something like that, if you wanted to.
We'd have to wait three business days before they could have that meeting?
Right. The Brown Act requires seventy-two hours notice for the meeting itself.
Terrence, they have seventy-two hours to set a meeting that cannot happen earlier than three days.
Right.
Now, if we said they have seventy-two hours to set a meeting, and they have five business days, after that, three days, are you okay with that? That would prolong projects about a week, a little over a week, eight or nine days.
I think, I'm kind of agree with what Jennifer said. I think, once you go and sit down and start talking about the process, that way you get to bring Councilmember Sorio into the table, and then you guys can figure that out. As far as me, as a developer, whether I'm from Fresno, whether I'm from another city, when I see certainty option and go, if you do these five different things, as a developer, and I check off all five of these, I want this process to go as smooth as possible. So if you say, okay, then the maximum is five days after you do these certainty, certain things, we're fine. I'm totally fine with it. But I do understand this is just about process, and process can be dealt with after ninety days. I'm fine with that. But today, I just want to make sure that this thing just passed where it is.
Got it, yeah. Got it, got it, got it. All right. And I guess I can modify my motion to vote, to approve the standards today. I don't know which one of these, to vote to approve the standards today, but these changes will not be effective until the process is brought to council within ninety days, I think Councilman Brand talked about. You said you probably don't need a full ninety days. Is that right? And then, at that time, the process should not, the seventy-two hour setting of a meeting should not exceed five days after that, seventy-two hours.
I'm fine with that.
Can I do that?
Wait a minute, let me ask, are you, so what is the amended motion?
I'm asking if I can do what I just said.
If I'm trying, I'll try to reword it here. Your motion is to approve the development code item today.
Yeah.
With the provision that it will not be effective until the matter of the process is brought back to council. And as a matter of fact, the, if you vote today to approve the development code, it has to come back for adoption a week after today, and wouldn't be effective until thirty days after that, anyway. So the earliest, if you vote today on the development code that it would be effective is about five weeks from today.
Okay. All right, then, actually, our city attorney cleared that up. So I'm going to vote today to approve the development code. That's what we've all been talking about. The standards themselves will be passed as presented by staff, with Mr. Fraser's cutout. And then, but they won't become effective until after this process has been brought to the council, vetted by the council, and approved by the council.
I just have a clarification. So you don't want these standards, which would go into effect thirty days from now, to actually be able, so that our developers can use them? Because not all neighborhoods would be impacted by this process. There are only certain neighborhoods that are under these different committees. So a neighborhood in the northeast or the northwest that doesn't have a tower, a tower design, could still proceed if we allow these changes to go into effect thirty days, because it seems like your amendment would not allow until ninety days. So I don't know if you really want to do that.
The attorney, you get what she's saying. Let's just take these two areas of town that even have a design review or an application review committee, and pass it for everybody else. And then, in these two areas of town, the...
It would not be effective in those areas.
...put on hold until we conquer the process.
In the areas that have the committees, these committees.
Now, you know, you're pushing the process out a lot longer. That was the whole point that we're up here for, so these processes don't give process to another process, to another meeting, to another process. I really don't understand why we have to wait ninety days just for, just simple, take out a couple of letters. I'm really getting confused about this.
Say that again, Terrence.
Well, I'm just saying, we only taken out a few letters, and I don't understand why it's taking ninety days to do that, to take it to another process, to another meeting. I mean, you know, it's pretty simple. You have three business days, which by law, the seventy-two hours, they're going to get recognized, but...
Can I just clarify? So, for the process, not only is it the process, but for the Tower Design Review Committee, we still need to come back with the actually certainty standards. So it is going to take a few weeks. So what I was suggesting, because he was trying to push it out ninety days for the entire city, I'm, my suggestion is, let's charge forward. In thirty days, it becomes effective in the areas that doesn't have these committees. And then we resolve the committees in the next maximum ninety days. I don't think it's going to take us ninety days. That is the target, though, to have everything complete within the ninety days for those areas that have these specific, and I think it's primarily the tower. I don't, I don't know what other neighborhoods.
It's only the tower.
It's only the tower. I don't think, I don't think there are other neighborhoods that have guidelines.
I don't understand.
She's actually...
Well, Fulton and Lowell.
Well, I don't understand what the current motion is, totally. And I'm not exactly sure I even agree with the, I don't know if I agree with where this is going, because this is actually relatively settled. is actually relatively settled and what you're motioning and amending was already going to occur. Staff is already going to work on the text amendment that they were going to bring back to us. I'm not exactly sure we need to do any further motioning with that. The only thing that we were trying to do was, was give us a time certain when they would come back with that. I don't think that we need to do any more to this particular item other than say, staff, please come back to us in the 90 days. Everything else was already going to happen anyway and it's now becoming confusing.
Okay.
Yes. Can we, like, stop there?
Okay. That's what you want, right there?
Yeah, absolutely. He, he, right there.
All right. Mark it, mark the time and date right here. Okay. Because, because we could hypothetically come back and have a screwed up process.
Right.
Right? But I'll amend my motion to pass exactly what the staff recommended today, and we'll just deal with the process. We'll give direction to staff to begin the process immediately, um, and come back to us at a later date, within 90 days.
Yes.
All right.
I, I think I could solve this problem if all you builders and developers would come to District Four. We could all take care of, make it work, you know?
No more meetings.
My district's pretty simple. Uh, Councilmember Soria.
I just want to make one last, last comment because we're talking about, um, really shortening the process and making the city of Fresno business friendly. And I know that, um, for a number of, um, developers and some of my colleagues in terms of the public review process with these committees, that's what prolonged some of this. But let's also remember that because of by right, the, our developers and whoever wants to do a project in our community is already shaving off at least 30 days because there's no more CUP. And so let's make sure that we know that. So there is a benefit even to what we are approving today without the, the tower process. And so I still want to make sure that folks know that the city of Fresno is, um, trying to shorten the process, and we get that by eliminating the CUP, by making it by right.
Please staff to come back within 90 days.
Okay. This, this screen is finally clear. I've been anxiously waiting all day to make a comment other than trying to control this chaos. Okay. With that in mind, uh, I think that the, uh, from what I understand, any project that goes through certainty option or flexibility option can be appealed all the way up to the city council.
Correct.
AKA the Supreme Court finding. Is that true, somebody? And if it is true, where is it in our, are, can we add it or is it already in this?
Again, that's part of the process that needs to be changed. Currently, an appeal would go to, uh, of my decision would go to the planning commission and it would stop there. This, um, by changing the process, it will allow an appeal from the planning commission to come to this body.
That'll be included in our next go-around.
Correct.
Sometime this year.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, another question I had is, in reading, uh, through this, I noted some language that I really didn't understand. And, um, it goes something like, uh, you have to prove in your development application, quote, "support the growth in value of surrounding properties." I, I don't know what that means. It's, sounds pretty subjective and ambiguous to me. So is there, how do you, how do you define that standard? It's on 15 dash 1105, 15 dash 1005 at A subpart four. It's 15 dash 1105 and/or 15 dash 1005 A4.
Right. Yeah, so, um, the objective of the flexibility option was to not tie it down to hard standards, like, you know, you have to have an articulation every 50 feet and things like that. And so, uh, but rather show that you're meeting certain goals. And so this is one of the goals that, um, that there was consensus on, was that, okay, you know, the reason we, we got into architecture a little bit and the facade design was to try to up the, the appearance of buildings, especially as you see them from the street, so that property values are protected and enhanced over time. And so that's what, um, that goal there is, um, is getting at. It is granted a bit subjective, but they all are, and that was, that was by design. The whole flexibility option is a bit subjective and-
Well, my concern is if this, uh, code is not updated, well, not necessarily updated, but is revised for another 20, 30 years, the people that are here in this room today have a, a certain, uh, understanding of what that means. But future generations of employees of the city of Fresno, including the council, uh, as employees may not understand what we are intending. So I don't know if that's something that we should leave in or take out. It's, it, as an attorney, it seems so ambiguous to me. I could take that and run with it eight different ways, depending on my client.
Yeah. Um, I mean, you could say the same about be aesthetically and functionally compatible, you know? Um, that was not a thing. What I can tell you, um, it's up to you what you would want to propose, but what I can tell you is that within the group that we pulled together, um, the, the neighborhood folks that we spoke to, that, that was something that was not contentious at all. Everybody was very comfortable with that. And we've talked a lot today about some of the other areas where there was some concern, but, but this was a part that, um, that folks-
The, the other one I was concerned with is, quote, "create an interface between the building and the public sidewalks, which results in a high level of activity on the sidewalk." So is that skateboarding tables outside? Is it, uh, people congregating? Is it, uh, I mean, again, maybe I'm being too overly lawyer about this, but it, it's so vague and ambiguous. For me, it's a, it's a great way to phrase that because I can take that and run, like, again, run 18 different ways depending on the client that I have with these questions. So, I don't know if these things can be clarified or if they, maybe they should just be deleted. I'm not sure. I'll just give you an opportunity to look it over and think about it and we can, uh, address that later.
Yeah. All I would say is that staff is comfortable with it. It is a little bit subjective. Um, that was, you know, the design of the flexibility option and, um, it can be interpreted different ways. And the idea was, because in the mixed-use areas in particular, you know, we're trying to get people walking on those sidewalks, right, to stimulate business activity and to keep the place feeling comfortable and safe. And so that's what we were trying to get at with some of the, the standards under pedestrian access, right? So the, the, what we heard out of the committee was, hey, okay, we need some flexibility into how we can go about that. So that's why we came up with these goals that are more open to interpretation. And if somebody wants to propose something creative, that'll get us to the same place, you know, they can go through the flexibility option. But the, the idea behind the flexibility option is that you would have, you know, goals that you're judging against rather than these hard standards. And so by their nature, a goal is going to be a little bit more, uh, open to interpretation than a clear, hard standard, which is why, you know, certain folks are just going to want to go to that certainty option and check the boxes and, and move on.
So with this, uh, if there is a dispute, what, what is the process, our proposed process?
Well, so if somebody had come in, wanted the flexibility option, and for example, was, um, was denied, the director felt that, um, they didn't meet those goals, then they would be able to appeal to planning commission and then, you know, according to the procedural changes that we're talking about, come to, to this body.
Supreme Court.
What's that?
The Supreme Court.
Yeah, that's right. Exactly.
All right. One other comment. Um, I was reviewing the sample design guideline checklist. Again, it seems to, if I'm coming, uh, forward with a project and I look through this, it seems to me that some of the things on here are not really relevant. And it might mislead me, not intentionally, but by way of example. Uh, and again, some of the language, uh, under, um, architectural design of the last century says, "and should not look cartoonish or fake." So, I mean, I'm not sure what that means or, or if that should be included, you know? It's kind of, I don't know. And there's a couple others, uh-
That language is actually in the tower district design guidelines, so.
Well, not everything is going to be in the tower district. We're going to go to District Four sometime.
That would only apply to the tower district.
Okay.
Those design, so-
So the sample guide only applies to the tower.
So, so most of the city won't even have that. They'll just have what's here in your ordinance bill and that's it. Um, neighborhoods like Tower District that have their own design guidelines, that they would be put into a checklist form so we can go through them really quick and determine compliance, it would only be applied there. So your district wouldn't be subject to those. Downtown wouldn't be subject to those. It's only the tower district. And then that, that, everything on that sheet is already adopted, actually, in the tower guidelines. We just reformatted it into a checklist to show how we'd be able to get through it really quick and determine compliance and, and get somebody a good-
I just suggest maybe labeling it that, uh, the uniqueness of the tower district and maybe a more generic one for the rest of, uh, us ordinary people, I guess you'd say, are the ones that don't have all these, 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 go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry. The, the ones for other areas don't exist. It would just be the ordinance bill. That's part of the development code, and that's it. So there would only be extra design guidelines applied if the neighborhood already has some adopted, like Tower and Lowell are the only ones that I'm aware of that even have it. So everywhere else, that step wouldn't even be part of the process.
Okay. I, I, I get that part, but would it be helpful to the person that's coming forward with a project to have a checklist like this or not?
Well, their checklist would be these design standards and the certainty option.
And is that available through, um, or will be?
If it's adopted today, we can always put it into a checklist format so that-
We will put it into-
Yeah.
Perfect. Yes, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, um, that's all for me. And, uh, the award winner wants to speak one more time. Councilmember Brandal.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I've put a lot of time into this thing, so I've got to get it right in my mind. Look, I'm going to vote yes today on the standards. The standards took a lot of work just to get the standards here. But making something fast-track is more than just the standards. It is the process, right? So I'm going to vote yes today on the standards because you did a lot of hard work, folks in the audience did a lot of hard work, folks up here on council did a lot of hard work. But if the time comes and the process is not correct, I'll vote no then. But I am going to support this today. But it, it's very important to get the other part done too, or else we will not be able to look people in the eye and say we're fast-tracking anything.
Agreed.
So, I appreciate that. And the mayor sat here earlier. She said she was committed to that, so we'll see.
We are too. We'll be back very quickly.
All right. Thank you.
City manager, you're the only one that's been quiet on this. Okay, I'm very happy to say that the screen is clear. Oh my God. Uh, okay. So now we have a motion, uh, to approve by Councilmember Brandal, with a second by Councilmember Brand. All those in favor and those opposed? Passes 7-0. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, folks, I think, uh, we've pretty much done, uh, the entire agenda and, uh, we're at a moment to, uh, where we can adjourn these proceedings. And I want to remind everyone that we are adjourning the proceedings in loving memory and in honor of Pauline Kimber. Thank you all very much.